I call this February 24th, 2020 work session to order. Before we begin, I'd like to ask if it's okay with the council, we'll have a small change in the agenda. We'll take the council only calendar, item 3B as in beta, and just put that right before adjournment. It's not an urgent item. And that way, we'll make sure we take care of everything else, and if we can get to that, we will do that. Would that be okay with everybody? Okay. Seeing head nods, we'll go ahead and do that. We're going to move to item two, discussion items. We'll start with Police Chief Patrice Andrews, Morrisville Police Department Body-Worn Camera Program. Ms. Andrews?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our body-worn camera program. And I want to just kind of give you a brief presentation, but obviously, you are, and anytime you can ask questions as we go through it. Okay? All right, so I want to talk to you. Oh, yes, yes, yes. I'm glad you reminded me.
Yeah, that was.
I'm going to pass those if you don't mind. Thank you. And I'll give you a second to take around this. History of body-worn cameras. So, you know, body-worn cameras are not a new idea of technology. They've been around for a little while, since the late, since the early or late 1990s into 2009. And so, the first implementation that we do know of was in 2009. Obviously, California, the city of Oakland Police Department, one of the largest police departments in this country. And they started the, one of the first body-worn camera programs. And so, a lot of the data that we have, early data, is based upon their information that they, that they provided. So, as you know, about 2014, we really started to see more information coming out, some studies provided by the Department of Justice as well as Perf. That same year, obviously, in August of 2014, was the killing of Michael Brown in Ferguson. And that really started the ball rolling, as we are discussing, so police, community relationships, transparency, and the overall trust that the community has within the police department. And that was, you know, this was just now something that was coming to light, that there were concerns for a very long time prior to that. So, in May of 2015, President Obama had started the Task Force on 21st Century Policing. The report, the final report was released, and obviously, there were several recommendations contained within that report that were a part of six pillars. So, body-worn cameras in itself is, really can lend itself to all of the pillars, but where it's most appropriate is pillar five, I'm sorry, is pillar three, and it talks about technology and social media. So, again, with this big wave of body-worn camera implementation and the, and the commitment that the federal government had, particularly the Department of Justice had, to really allowing or providing a way and an avenue in which police departments could begin their body-worn camera programs, they made available a large amount of grant money. So, between 2014 to 2017, there was approximately $75 million worth of body-worn camera grants that were made priority to, and were awarded to various agencies across the country. So, that grant phase ended, and so, the Department of Justice throughout the years generally, and the federal government will set different recommendations and priorities as to what they would like to see. And so, what are body-worn cameras, right? So, they're just, they're recording devices essentially. They're small devices, and the purpose is to record interaction between law enforcement and the community. And from that, we, we gain a lot of information. So, what is the purpose? Every agency has kind of a driving purpose of why they, they want to implement body-worn camera policies. And so, for us, and this is in order of our purpose, is that we obviously, we want to enhance the safety for our officers, but we want to improve that engagement. So, the, the idea is that the likelihood of some sort of negative encounter is reduced when there is a body-worn camera being displayed. When that officer knows that we, what he or she, what they're doing is going to be documented, or that citizen knows that whatever they're thinking about doing is going to be captured on that camera. And then, obviously, transparency, you know, when we talk about use of force, and then citizen complaints that often will, could potentially resort from officer use of force. And obviously, to enhance court outcomes. So, for us, you know, body-worn cameras are a great source of, of kind of being there in the moment with the officer as it happened. And so, when the district attorney views some of this body-worn camera footage as it relates to evidentiary value, we are most likely, more likely, to receive a conviction based upon the footage utilized in body-worn camera. And then, training. So, there is a lot of body-worn camera footage out there from different agencies, and every law enforcement agency will really tap into those resources. One more, most significant body-worn camera footage comes out of Arizona, a Walmart, there was a Walmart in Arizona. It was a very large fight that ended up in a fatal shooting, and then another, and then a police officer was shot. But it's an eight-minute video, but from that video, there's key training points that law enforcement agencies across this country actually use to evaluate their own training. All right, so I want to kind of talk about, what is the law, right? How does it apply to North Carolina, and then how does it apply to us here in the town of Morrisville? So, obviously, we are guided in everything that we do by law, by North Carolina general statute, as it relates to public information, public records, and where do the body-worn cameras fall into this? So, obviously, public records and information, body-worn cameras, because they're recordings, they fall into that. So, that's the same as any kind of recordings that we would be, that we would use if we were interviewing someone in our interview room. So, those recordings are, fall under records, North Carolina records. And the general release, so if we wanted to, if something happened here, and we wanted to just release the footage, we no longer can do that. At one time, we were able, as police chiefs, to be able to say, "I'm going to release the footage. Now, you have to obtain permission, so to speak, or authorization from a superior court judge through a court order." So, most recently, in another jurisdiction, they had had an incident that they proactively went and sought the release of that footage, and in the most recent one, it was denied release. However, the viewing of the footage was authorized, to actually have people come in to view the footage.
When did it change so that it required a court order?
So, that was 2016, 2017, I believe it was. Am I right on that?
Do you have any insight into what the driving force behind that change was?
So, you know, the, the law is constantly changing, and I think because here, body-worn cameras were so new, we were still being, we were still learning as we went along. And there were some concerns expressed, obviously, consideration for the victim, consideration for whoever is being shown on that body-worn camera. And so, that was part of the driving factor of being, in our, in our kind of urge, in our, in our wanting to be very transparent, we were just simply releasing that footage without any regulation on that. And so, I think it's just, it was just the court saying, "Okay, let's, let's, you know, kind of dial it back a little bit, and let's have a second, kind of a second opinion on that, and a second authorization."
Was there, like, a class, it was a case law which happened in Goldsboro or something, where this traffic, like, the police came and stopped it, and then something happened, and then the police released this without, you know, like, and then it got counterlos of it, saying that you took my privacy.
Privacy, right.
And that's where I think somebody came through.
And that could, that, and that very well could be, I think it's, it's about, you know, what are citizens, what are the, the people that are featured, that are on that video, what are their, what's their privacy, right? And I think that, that is a part of why it was dialed back a little bit, because in certain rulings, the, the judges, they will consider that. They will consider, what is, is the privacy of the victim or the person portrayed here? Does that outweigh the public need to know? Right? And I think that's a very important consideration, that as we were going through releasing it, we didn't really think about, we just want to be as transparent as possible.
What do other states do?
So, other states are along, that's, that's a standard guideline. That's a standard guideline in most states. So, there are exceptions to, to viewing or disclosure. So, when I, when I say disclosure, not dissemination, okay? Just being able to view. So, there are exceptions to that. So, obviously, if we have a use-of-force complaint that involves the, the person portrayed, we could bring them in and show them that video, so they could view that video.
Then why do all these news channels get their 911 quickly before even those things? What do they do to get that?
So, that's, that's a very good question. So, when an incident happens, the 911 recordings, those are public record.
Yeah.
To, to, there, there are some nuances to that, though, right? So, 911 recordings, it's a simple request for the recording. They will listen to it and redact what does not, or what isn't covered under public record.
Got it.
So, 911 recordings are a little bit different, but we do still want to make sure that in releasing those, we are not, we are not, obviously, violating any personal privacy, any, we want to respect the victims, want to make sure that, that we are not in any way the case, you know, we're not doing anything to hinder the case at all, the investigation.
Thank you.
So, is it the case that, broadly speaking, anyone can come and view the recording, but you can't disseminate it, but is it public in the sense that anyone from the public can come and view it?
So, no, no. So, basically, if, if you were on the recording.
Okay.
You would be able to come and view it, right? And there's a, there's a small group of people who would be able to view it. So, if, if we had something that happened that obviously rose to the level of a shocking of the conscience, okay? So, what I would do is that that video would be viewed by manager Page, and, and then, obviously, assistant town manager, Zudma, and then attorney Gray. So, those three individuals, so if one wasn't present, then it would obviously default, default to the other. But, but they would be able to view the video, and then be able to disseminate any information to you all, that, any questions that you might have, but you would actually not view the video. And then, obviously, officers, they're able to view it, right? They're able to view their own video, they can't go and pull some, another officer's video. Okay? All right, so let's, and we, we started to talk about our policy a little bit. So, in, in writing our draft policy, we, we wanted to, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel, okay? So, we took best practices from other agencies. So, some of, I took, you know, guidelines from larger agencies that have a very rigorous, robust policy, and had been vetted multiple, multiple times. We also used policy from other departments that are almost similar in size, that are very close to us, and we used some of their policies in, in writing ours. And so, you know, the idea is that you definitely want to use accredited, clearly accredited policy, you know, from agencies that are accredited, and you want to make sure that you are, you're making sure that that policy does fit your agency. So, we do have a general order, that's 5.15, and that establishes not only the use of our body-worn cameras, but also our in-car cameras, because we've, we've had in-car cameras now for a number of years. And so, this policy, it just, it just makes most sense to, to marry the two. It does clearly list guidelines for activation and deactivation. So, some considerations that, that, that we had was, obviously, privacy, right? Do officers, I mean, what are they prohibited to do, you know, activating and recording? So, they can, absolutely cannot record in places where you have an expectation of privacy, privacy, so a bathroom, a dressing room, right? And, and so, we want to make sure that that's under our prohibited guidelines. In addition, so, private conversations. So, we don't want to do recording of private conversations, right? So, obviously, searches, so certain strip searches, for example, we don't want to record those. Now, what you can do is you can record the before, so the area that, that's going to be utilized for such a search. And then, the most important, and we had received some feedback today in preparation for our discussion tonight, of, you know, hospitals. So, places of healthcare places, right? So, obviously, you have more than just the person that you are encountering there, you have other people to consider, as well as the standard HIPAA guidelines and regulations of patient privacy and care. And so, there's, there, there are considerations for all of that within our policy. In addition, you know, we want to make sure that our victims of sexual assault, that they are protected. We want to make sure that we are advising them, and we're allowing them to have a say-so as to what is recorded. So, if we have, where we've responded to a sexual assault, and we're talking to that victim, we want to let the victim know that, listen, do you want to be recorded? And if he or she says, "No, we don't," we'll turn it off. We'll turn it off.
I have some concerns about the deactivation of body cameras. Is this a good time for it, or do you want to wait till the end?
So, I'll go through, and then we can talk about. So, obviously, training, it does speak to our training. We will, you know, body-worn camera footage is great for the, the training. And then, retention. So, we, we have retention guidelines that, that kind of vary from whatever the call is, so what type of call is being recorded. Obviously, any personnel or anything like that will be a little bit longer. So, types of body-worn cameras, I did bring them today. We are evaluating a two-piece and a single piece, and I'll pass these around, that you all can take a look at. And they, these are the actual ones, so please don't hit this button on the bottom, because I have yet to really figure out well how to, how to turn it off. So, these are the two-piece. So, what you are holding are first, first and second generation cameras.
This is what they wear?
Correct. That's what they wear. So, that's actually, the hard plate goes down in their vest, the outside, it's a, it's a magnet essentially, and it's a very strong magnet. And so, that's a first, first generation.
Oh, that's the lens.
Mm-hmm. That's the lens, yes. And so, these are all Bluetooth Wi-Fi capability, they can sync up from officer to officer, so you can get different views simultaneously. The two-piece is a, is a newer model. It's not the newest, because within the last couple of weeks, they've come out with a completely new model. So, this, 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 this technology is, is quickly, it, it changes from year to year. I'll let you, and they are, they are hardy. And so, one of the things that we are looking at is how, how hardy is the software or is the hardware? I mean, will it withstand a drop? Will it withstand a confrontation? Will it, how, how well does it hold up? And so, we are, we are conducting right now officer evaluations of the equipment. So, we have three line officers right now, and those are their, their cameras that they've been issued. There's 30-day evaluation period for that, and they're going to, they're going to talk about, you know, how do they feel about it? What was the ease of use? Were they durable? Are they able to access their recordings if they need to? How easy is it for them? We've already had an issue that I'm glad that we had during the testing phase with their car wiring, and how it syncs up with these. So, that's a good thing to, you know, to go ahead and have these kind of issues now. And so, at the end of their 30-day evaluation, they will provide to us an overall summary of how it, the ease of how it works for them, which is important. And so, during this process, obviously, we will have an administrative evaluation. We will compile the summary from the officers. We'll also have two feedback forums, and, and we will want to be purposeful in addressing the privacy concerns, because there are, I get it, you know, I, I get it, and there, because our officers express concerns about privacy. You know, how, well, I have to have it on all the time, and what if I don't? Do I have to turn it on in the bathroom? And, you know, just those kinds of questions. So, so we will be having the conversations, obviously, with, with the public, and then any feedback as, as we move forward in completing, bless you, completing our policy draft.
Like, people may forget to keep off the recording, you know, they may be off duty and it's still recording. Do they have the ability to go back and delete that part? Or is it like goes into the central storage that whatever is recorded is recorded? How does it work?
Yeah, so it doesn't have, so the cameras, if they're not synced up with their car, so you have to be in the car, there has to be that connection between the in-car system, because those are both watch guard systems, so they have to be able to talk to each other. So, those cameras will turn themselves off if they're not talking to the car. So, that's kind of that, that fail safe.
So, you'd say the storage is in the car?
So, the storage is actually, we have storage at the police department. So, watch guard, we have two towers that's at the police department, and, and what we did, when we, we purchased the in-car camera systems, we knew at some point within the next few years, we would want to look at body-worn cameras. So, we prepared for storage. So, currently, we have two terabytes of storage, and of, of the body-worn cameras and in-car cameras, and we're doing really well with that, even with our staffing numbers that we have, we're doing, the amount of time they're spending on the roadway, and how much are they using it, and things like that. So, we're doing very well with the, with, with that storage for us. We are looking at moving to more of a cloud-based storage, and so, we'll probably do a hybrid right, for right now, to see how that works. And, you know, cloud is really the way to go, but with something so important, we want to make sure that we are, we've got it right before we jump all the way to 100% cloud-based storage. But as of right now, we have two terabytes of storage.
And what's the retention like?
So, it, it, it does differ, depending on what the call is. So, we've got retention set from, anywhere from a week to the lifetime of the employee if it's an employee-related. So, if it's in a complaint, or a criminal, something criminal involving the employee, it, it stays for what the retention records are for employees.
So, is it, so?
Wouldn't you want the body camera to be able to have, still record away from the car?
Yes. So, as long as there's not an event that has triggered it, so if there is an event that has triggered the body-worn camera, as well as the car to start recording, because if one records, the other one is going to start recording, it will stay on until it's actually deactivated.
Okay.
By the officer. So, that officer will have to deactivate that. Now, if, if the officer leaves the car and the car shuts off for a certain period of time, both of those will, will shut off. Now, they can be, and that's unlikely to happen during a situation where there's a, that an officer has responded to a call. It's unlikely that their car is going to be off if their in-car camera is on.
So, I had a similar question, so I want to follow up to make sure. So, if an officer got into a chase away from the vehicle.
Running behind him.
You're saying it would still record.
Correct, correct.
It doesn't get, because you were talking about it, talking to the car. It would still be talking to the car in that case.
Yes.
As long as the car's running.
Correct. And the in-car camera is running.
They always leave the car running?
Is there a range for it?
So, they're, so, okay, so they leave their car, so if they, if they've gotten into a foot chase, most likely, their car will be running. And that, that in-car camera, right? So, let's just, let's say, for example, they've gotten out, because this has happened, they've gotten out with a shoplifter at Walmart, and their car is off, and they don't have their body, because this wouldn't, just a shoplifter wouldn't necessarily trigger a body-worn camera to, to be activated, or even the in-car camera. So, if something happens, they push that button. The in-car camera will come on, and the body-worn camera will also come on. So, those, that, the technology will sense, wait a minute, wait a minute, something's happening here, I was just activated.
Okay.
Okay? So, it, it will, it will trigger, and it will stay on until the event is, is done. Versus, versus the officer just kind of driving home and forgetting that this thing was running the entire time. And it does the, doo-doo, so it does have a reminder as well.
So, the main question, even I had the same thing, is suppose town hall, the, the unit is there, and that guy had a foot chase all the way to the end of Macramin. So, you're saying that the range will still pick it up, that he would be continuously recording while?
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Yeah, yeah. It'll, it'll, and it'll sync with other officers, and that's the really good thing about, and I don't know about other body-worn camera systems, but these sync to each other. So, if he or she runs all the way down the road, you're going to have officers that are coming to that other officer, and so, you will start to pick up different recordings, because they will, they will sync to each other.
And is someone back at the police station monitoring the recordings of the event, or is it just like being, being recorded, and then everybody looks at it at the same time?
That's it. So, it's, it's, it's being recorded, it's retained until the officers come back to, to the station, and then they're, they're downloaded kind of into the system, almost instantly, they're downloaded. So, they, they're up and ready for viewing within, you know, a couple hours right after the incident.
And I'll offer, this is a learned process we went through when we put the in-car cameras in, about the downloading and the storage. So, all of that was information we know as it applies to this as well.
So, can I, Chief, can I, so you said an officer can turn it on. How do they know if it's on or off?
So, it will, it'll beep on a power-up, and it'll, it'll start beeping at you, it'll talk to you every now and again, and every, it increments, it'll, it'll talk, it'll actually beep.
Okay, so there's no, there's no light on?
Yeah, so there, well, there's a, there's a green light, but it's facing the front.
Okay.
So, they wouldn't necessarily see, right? It'll vibrate on and on, and then it'll, it'll start beeping at increments.
So, when we, I don't know if this is the right time, but when we get there, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, the good and the bad of the use of cameras.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, obviously, we, we do have to consider now and project, not only for warranty and licensing and all this other stuff that we do currently for our in-car camera systems and replacements, but we do really have to start thinking about down the road, we have to incorporate the warranties and the licensing. What kind of replacement schedule are we, are we going to have with, are we going to, are they going to coincide with the in-car camera systems? Body-worn camera systems, they, they change constantly, and so, are we going to, are we going to keep them for five years and then replace them with the newest, the newest model? I am really happy now that watch guard camera systems are now on, they are now on state contract, which is huge financially for us and other departments as well.
How much are they?
So, these units, and it's really per unit, you're looking at about $900 total. So, that's for each one of these units, it comes with the hardware, and then you've got the charger, and so, they can be, they can be quite expensive.
And you'd want to have one per officer plus some extras, right?
Yes. Essentially, that's what we, that's what we would like, is, is to have one per officer. But that's why you also, you want to be diligent with your warranties, too. So, if something happens, there, there's a replacement for those.
And I know I should know this, but how many officers do we have?
So, currently, we have 38, and, and once we are fully staffed, we'll have 43. All right. So, implementation, I talked a little bit about this, is the, you know, the, the funding that we currently have, that, that you all approved for our camera purchase for this budget. And then, we want to deliver the training to the officers. So, if I had trouble figuring out how to turn these off, I mean, you know, we, we need training, right? And then, getting used to using them and having them on your body, and, and making sure that they're second nature to you as, as putting on the uniform, right? And then, a communications campaign. So, obviously, we want to make sure that we are communicating with, with our community. are communicating with, with our community, um, our stakeholders within our community, right, as well as District Attorney's Office, saying, you know, District Attorney Freeman, we now have body worn cameras, and so, you know, thankfully, we, you know, we, we, we talk often, at least once a month, um, so I'm able, and she already knows that, that we are in the process of body worn cameras. And then also, we want to communicate this to the media, so I think it's important in letting them know what to expect from the Town of Morrisville Police Department, should a critical incident happen, what can you expect as far as timeline, and, and how is that going to work here, um, establishing those guidelines, and, and making sure the communication is open with our media as well. And then, most importantly, we want to really conduct assessments, um, post-implementation assessments, so we'll start doing those quarterly, because there will be a lot of data that we can, we can pull, and then annual reports, so we want to do annual reports, um, on our, on our program, to see what's working, what isn't, and we want to make that available too, as well. All right, and so that is, that's the end of my presentation, and I'll be happy to take any further questions.
Okay.
I'll let you answer a question, Jewish, or do you want me to help?
No, you can help.
Okay, Ms. Rabadi, then Satish, and then Councilmember Pender, please.
Okay, so I have some general, um, issues with deactivation of, of body worn cameras, and just to be clear, I have no reservations about any Morrisville officer, obviously, I've never heard anything that would give me a concern about any officer in our department, but just speaking generally, um, speaking generally, I have a concern about an officer being able to, um, deactivate the camera at will, because it seems to me that that type of system is ripe for misuse, and I was wondering if there's any type of system or any type of policy we could put in place, because you never know when something's gonna happen, and so I was wondering if there was any type of policy that we could put in place where, when an officer responds to a call, the body worn camera is on until they return from the call and download the footage, or something like that.
Yeah.
Just because I, I just don't think that, I think it's a lot to put on the officer when, you know, all of a sudden, like, they're just stopping a shoplifter, like you said, and then all of a sudden, the shoplifter has a gun, I don't think the first impulse is gonna be to go for the camera, um, so I just want, and I don't think that it, it evokes trust in the citizens if they know that the officer can, at any time they want, turn that camera off, and there's not gonna be a very clear policy governing that, so, you know, if, obviously, if an officer's going to the bathroom, they should be able to, if they're questioning a sexual assault victim, they should be able to indicate on the body worn camera that they're gonna be turning it off, and then indicate when they're turning it back on, but I, I guess I would just like to see that covered in more detail.
So I, I, I completely agree with you, and that is actually currently in our policy, um, and we've also been prepping officers with the in-car camera system, so they have been prepped, and, and there is policy, clear guidelines establishing the deactivation, so when, when can you turn your camera off, or it's, it's in black and white in our policy that you can't turn it off until that call is done, so everything that you're doing for that call is done. Now, if they are, let's say, they, they've asked the sexual assault victim, you know, do you mind, and, and he or she says, no, I, I don't want to be recorded, so they have to preamble that before cutting that off.
Sure.
So they have to preamble, what is the reason, and, and then there's also in our policy, regular audits by our supervisors, um, so not only do our sergeants have a responsibility to, to audit the cameras of their officers, but my, the lieutenants, captains, and even I will be auditing those, so there's going to be, and if I see something, I'm, obviously, I'm gonna start asking, why did this happen, why was, because we are doing it now with our in-car cameras, um, as well.
And is the in-car camera, is that always on?
It is not always on, so it's not always recording, but it is always on, um, so we could, we could actually go back, so let's say if there was an event that happened, I can, I can go back 30 seconds to pull, um, and look at what happened leading up to that.
So what if an officer, as tragically happens all the time, was ambushed in their car, um, the car camera, so you could only see 30 seconds back from when, from what point? When the shot was fired, or when?
Well, if, if something happens that triggers it, now, now it's not, it, it, there has to be a triggering event for it to be able to go back and pull, pull that footage, right, um, so if there's something, so we do have triggering events that, that are set, so if there's a sudden deceleration in the car, currently, our in-car cameras will start recording, if, if an officer's car is, is, is sensed going above 70, 75 miles an hour, it'll automatically start recording, um, and so-
And the body camera too?
And, and the body camera essentially is linked to the in-car camera system, so the idea is if that comes on, your body camera is going to come on and start recording, if the lights and sirens, those things, but unless there's a triggering event, um, it's not going to record, so it's not gonna pick up unless something triggers that in-car camera, so if something triggers it, it starts recording, I'll be able to go back and pull what led up to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, Councilmember Rabadi at this time?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Garamello, please.
Oh, Chief.
At the start of the presentation, you said, uh, it had three pillars or something, right, like, based on pillar three is the social media and, um, transparency, when you were talking about this slide, so, can you make me remind, like, what are those pillars I, because I, this is new to me.
Sure, yes, so on the Department of Justice, um, there, there, they have there, and will continue to have there, the, uh, task force to the President, when President Obama, so it was the 21st Century Task Force Report, so it's the official report, and in that, it's a very lengthy, great report with a lot of recommendations, right, um, and, um, and, and, and it's valuable tools and, and resources that it really kind of lays out how to, how to really, um, implement change in policy, um, to bring your department really into the 21st century, so there are six pillars, um, and so, I'll tell you, so trust and legitimacy, right, so obviously, body worn cameras, having forums, really being open with your, with your residents, communicating well on all platforms, which is what we try very hard to do, that builds trust and legitimacy, um, and then we have policy and oversight, right, um, really talking about, that talks about committees that, that actually want to take a look at your policies, so for us, the oversight is Kalia, and our policies are public record, right, so any resident, anyone can ask to see our policies, right, um, and then the, the part that we were talking, the technology and social media, the rest of the pillars talk about community policing, um, and also officer training, wellness, um, education.
Okay, so it was part of the-
It's an interesting read, the report, yeah.
And, and the other question I had is, uh, you talked about the triggering mechanism for that, is there a defined set of rules of what would trigger it, uh, like you said, 75 miles, about how it will, but-
We can set it to whatever.
Anything you want.
Pretty much, anything that the system can do, now, obviously, there are now, there's talk of potentially the, the system being triggered by, um, your, and there, there is at least one company out there that has that, if you unholster your weapon, it'll trigger your, your body worn camera, so it's, it's constantly evolving, and, and there are prototypes now that are being made that will actually go off of the officer's heart rate to trigger, so.
How much of the systems that are-
The guy has a whip, or-
When you unholster the weapon, are they much more expensive?
They're, they're all relatively the same, um, and, and that's, that's a sensor that's placed on the holster and on the firearm, um, so that the sensor, it's all kind of sensor-based. Yeah.
Okay, I may have no more questions. Okay, Councilmember Pender, then Mayor Pretam Johnson, please.
I think you may have already answered, um, one of the questions I had, because my question was around, like, how would you know if the police officer is, um, correctly deactivating or activating, and so you're saying that, um, the sergeants audit that, how often does that happen?
Correct, so to start with, we'll probably look at doing quarterly audits, um, to, just to start with, because we want to make sure that we're getting some robust, some good information, right, we want to make sure that we've got enough information that we can start auditing, um, also, our sergeants do inspections, um, so, and, and I've been known to do surprise inspections, to make sure folks have all of their equipment on and working, um, so there, there is that surprise, um, and there are also some planned things, but, but we will be monitoring that very, very closely.
So what happens if you did come across some footage where someone forgot to turn their, um, camera off when they went into the bathroom, do, are you able to delete that then?
So we're not able to delete it, so, but, but that will actually, because there's no, if there's no retention standard placed on that, that, that will not last very long in our system, um, however, that's a conversation, just a simple conversation, saying, listen, you've got to be aware of your body worn camera, we know it's a new, it's an ex, it's a new piece of equipment on you, um, but there, this goes back to training also, so when we talk about if something all of a sudden happens, as we've learned from other agencies, because if we're not learning from other agencies, um, you know, we're, we're not doing our job, we've learned that officers have to train, so if there's something suddenly that happens, they've gotta, it's gotta be second nature for them to push it, you know, and so we'll be doing a lot of training based upon that.
Okay, and my last question, that's just out of curiosity, when an officer is answering a call, and it's like a domestic call, and they have to go inside, um, does, do they keep the camera on?
Yes.
Even though they're, like, is there, even though they're within someone, I mean, I know it makes sense, even though they're within someone's house, is there any a part or determination when they need to turn it off if they're in someone's house?
So I know exactly what you're saying, so essentially, when we are called responding to a call, the expectation of privacy there, so if we're responding to a domestic, um, and we get there, um, we have to investigate that, so you can't keep us out of your house, you know, if we, we know that there is something that has a potential crime that has happened, we, we have to investigate that, and so because domestics, in their pure, their sheer nature, can be violent, um, those cameras would remain on.
Okay.
Now, obviously, if it, if it crosses over into where we're finding out now that there's something that happened that's a, that's a bit more sensitive, like an assault or something involving a child, um, then we'll automatically shift gears, and if there's no danger to the officer, then that, that, we can talk about the sexual assault, so we're recording, can we record?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Mayor Pretam Johnson, and then Councilmember Al, please.
So I'm gonna kind of follow up on both what Donna and Ann said, because I'm a little concerned too about the expectations we set, and, um, you know, having body cameras, you know, is not always all positive, there, there are some negatives, I mean, equipment fails, um, there's human failure, so, um, the expecta, and, and, um, the, the camera, if there was only one person there, the camera only is, is recording from one position, so, you know, we've heard all kinds of stories where, um, somebody didn't realize the camera was off, turned it on, and then it was, well, what happened before, or, um, you know, it wasn't on at all, or they shut it off, or why did they shut it off, or the angle is so unique that you really don't get the whole perspective, so, that's all the negative side of it, so I don't know, if you could just share a little bit to make me more comfortable about all that, and, 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 not that I'm uncomfortable about, um, body cameras, I, I, I think there's great value there too, but I think it's important to understand the negative part of it as well, and what can happen, and then also how that affects maybe, um, and this is two-part, how, how it affects, um, situations that we're dealing with in the court system, and then, um, from insurance purposes too.
So, you know, and, and those are, you know, I'm constantly thinking about that, and I know that I've had several discussions with, with staff, you know, we've tried to kind of play everything in our head, the what could possibly, um, I can tell you from the, from the standpoint of officers not adhering to policy, that's, that's, that's a fix, I mean, that's something that we could, that's a behavior that, that will be changed, we know that it does take time, um, however, we have been prepping them with their in-car cameras, um, with activating their in-car cameras on, you know, certain, there are certain things that they have to, if their in-car camera doesn't trigger, that they've got to activate it, and so we've noticed that they've been doing much better with that, prepping them for making the transition to body worn cameras, um, you know, so, so we will, we will be watching that, as far as with the, um, the, kind of the lens, what that field of view is, this is something that in the test and evaluation, that we're hoping to, to get as right as we can, so, you know, is it, does the one piece work better, or does the two-piece work better for officers, the two-piece affords us the opportunity to move it in different places, but is it stable, will it get ripped off in a confrontation?
Yeah, and are you gonna have the foresight to do that, you know?
Right.
There are other things at play that are more important.
Right, absolutely, absolutely, so, so there's, there's, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of considerations, um, to, to these two systems, um, and making sure that we are capturing as much as we can, um, and, and that, that will take some, some trial and error, um, and, and what we would, we, we can communicate as much as possible, not just with our officers, but with other, um, agency heads, so what are other departments doing, because we, we might be brand new to joining the body worn camera club, but, I mean, there are other departments that are, that have worked through these processes, so the Town of Garner, I mean, we've got, you know, Assistant Town Manager Zudema was police chief in Town of Garner whenever they brought their, their body worn cameras on board, so I do have those resources to help work through those, those concerns.
Okay, so and then how it applies to court cases and insurance and-
Right, so court cases, the district attorney, what footage that we have, obviously, would, would go straight to the district attorney, um, for any, any evidentiary value, now, obviously, if a public defender or someone that's outside of who we are bound to send those to, they will need to have a court order for that, or that's something that they would obtain to, from the district attorney in discovery, so there's, there's a different process for that, so they, they are bound to different, they would have to have a court order if, let's just say, it's a, it's a complaint that arises out of a use of force, right, that we've already, we have investigated and found that that force was appropriate, but this person wants to take civil litigation, so they would need a court order to even obtain a copy, um, of, of the actual, um, the footage, and because that involved, um, a personnel matter, because that was a personnel matter, we would retain that, that footage of that force.
Okay, and insurance company would have the same, or, well, how would they get access to, and, and how does that affect our insurance, by the way, do it, does, you know?
The answer to that, I don't know if there's, if there is a, you know, if us having a body, body worn cameras, does that, what does that do for our, our insurance? Um, I know that that's a process we have to work through, if there was something that happened, that there could potentially be an insurance claim filed on, so is it, you know, a traffic accident, a officer hits someone, um, that's something that we would have to work through, I just don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay, okay, um, and then you talked about, uh, thank you for that, and you talked about, um, the policy, that's an internal policy that you have within the department, that's not a policy this council has to approve.
Correct, it's internal.
So, so could we get, see that policy, and maybe that would help with some of the questions that were asked, because you seem to be covering everything we're asking.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's totally fine, I, um, it's in draft right now, um, once we have a good final draft, yes, we'll make sure we get that-
Okay, that's good, and then, um, you talked about phasing in, how, how, um, how long is this phase in process, and how long do you think it's gonna take to get everybody up to speed, and then how long, you know, you've got to give people time, um, because this is new and unique, and, and, and just so you know, the, the questions I'm asking, I'm, I'm more concerned about, I'm, I'm concerned about our employees now.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, so we, we are, um, our timeline for phasing in, we want to have, um, body worn cameras completely phased in, um, by April, uh, la, last part of May, at the very latest, um, and, and so, but the training can start long before that, so we can really kind of start the training portion of it, the, the classroom, where, you know, they could actually see the body worn cameras, they, they might be able, but, but they won't be issued, the officers won't be issued until after, after we've gone through the training, um, it's, it's a lot like our, our Narcan, so they've, they had to have their training before issued Narcan, um, so this, it's, it's the same thing, so there has to be the, the training first.
Okay, and is, because it's, it is- Okay, and is, because it's, it, you know, you know, between now and April or May, no officer is gonna go through every situation that they normally would go through. So that sounds kind of quick to me. I was gonna say, I think we need to give a little...
Well, it's, you know, and, but I think you, but in what you just said, you hit the nail on the head, because we can, we can talk about these things in a classroom, but until you, it's rubber meets the road, and certainly, until they have that body worn camera on and they say, okay, this is something that we talked about, I've gotta hit that button, I mean, it is going to be hard for them, so there is going to be an adjustment. We are going to incorporate body worn cameras into our firearms training, so that, because that also, we do, we go through different scenarios during our in-service. So we are actually going to incorporate body worn cameras, the activation of those, in high-stress situations.
Okay.
So, it's, it's gonna be a process, but we, we are committed to working through that together.
And I know, I know everyone in the department is too, so that, that's, that's good to know. And then lastly, just one more, you, you had mentioned an annual report that would be conducted and made public. What do you anticipate in that annual report? What kind of information?
So it's, you know, it's, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be very baseline information. So when did our body worn camera, we wanna, we wanna provide some background on the policy, provide the policy? And then how many times was this body worn camera, how many times did we have activations? What was the nature of those activations, right? What, was there any training deficiencies noted from the body worn camera? How many policy violations? So just, I think those are, those are good, you know, good ways to track how effective and how good are the officers getting in actually using the camera systems? And, you know, and there's not a lot of information that's gonna be in the report, but I think it's gonna be interesting to see how many times that they actually had to use their body worn cameras.
Okay, and I would add, and if, if it has, what kind of effect it has on, you know, the, the issues we're facing here in town and the outcomes, and, you know, does it affect crime? Or reduce crime somehow, or does it affect those situations that go through the court system? That would be really, you know, the effect of them, you know, that's why we're doing it, because we're hoping to see some benefit to the community, so...
Absolutely, that's great, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Abadi?
Just an observation, I, one of the, one of the things that I've observed is that in some instances, and this might have happened in Charlotte where there's an incident and someone else witnesses it, someone will get something on their social media, on their phone device, and then they'll publish that out there to the public, and it's going out, and everyone starts weighing in on it, but the body camera was on, and based on this law, it's not public record. So I guess that's a constant battle that departments are facing with, how do you manage that?
Because... You're not, and, and I'll be honest, you're not, you're never gonna outrun the speed of social media, right? I mean, videos are real-time now, and they're not controlled or guided by any policy. But, but, but what I will say to you is that as soon as we can, we will be requesting, if it, if it's an incident, we wanna be very transparent. So if it's, and, and in this, there were some cases where we don't necessarily have to do the request for the body worn camera to be released, but in the, in the spirit of transparency and really showing, right? That, that we would do that as soon as possible.
Even though you're not required to, you could request it to be released.
Correct, yes.
All right, that's the only thing, I think Mayor Purtem brought up some points I was gonna make, so to save time, I will bring up the same point.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and then we'll have a second round, because it looks like some people want another talk. Will us have the capability to turn off the video but keep the audio on?
This has, no, so it's, it's video and audio, so you can't have one or the other, you have to have, it's both.
Can I just offer some of those privacy situations, if you get rid of the video, it's still okay, but...
Right.
Apparently not. Okay, at every traffic stop, the car camera goes on?
Correct.
There'd be a reason that anytime there is a questionable citizen interaction, it would not automatically be policy to just turn it on?
So, and that's, and, and there will be policy that will be contained in our policy. So if you, if there, an officer is engaging with a resident, a citizen, and the, the officer feels like or has indicators that potentially this might, this, something is not... Right, we are, we encourage them to activate their body worn camera, and which would, because we'd rather them do it, and then everything end up being fine, than not doing it and something, something critical happens, and we, we don't have that footage, we don't have either the in-car or the body worn camera.
Okay, those are my questions, I see Councilmember Caramilla, and then Councilmember Abadi.
I wanted to ask this question before, but it's like, who will review all these videos after they come and download? Because it's not like a nice Netflix movie where you have to watch all these things. It's a lot of work for someone to go back, and I would not put the burden on the officer, because it's someone else who has to see this and see, like, can they learn out of it? Or was it, you know, bad that he did, or was this, you know, not... So, do you have the people to go and monitor all this?
And obviously, the sergeants will do the auditing, but, you know, we also, and we do this now with our in-car camera videos. So if there's something that we think is really good training value, we will, we'll trade on that, right? And, and so we have a training sergeant, so Sergeant Hanks. He will have some administrative roles and will be able to also conduct an audit of the body worn cameras. And it, and it, you know, it's, it is, there's a, that's a, that's a big endeavor, yes. However, if you, you manage it well, right, you, you're not gonna get in the weeds on it, so...
The only reason I was thinking is, you said the retention is like a week or so. So within that one week, the officer, or the sergeant has to look into it and say, okay, I can purge it or how to keep it.
So...
So that's where I was asking, you know?
So we, and I will tell you, the, the watch guard system, sergeants, those can't, we can't self-purge. The only, there's only a select number of us that could actually change those, the retention. So a sergeant can't go in and purge a video. We have the retention set, so essentially, an officer will label it what they label it. And, and depending on how it's labeled, we have the retention set however it's labeled in the, in the system. But they do not have control to go in and purge it.
And how does the police unions like this, or they are against it?
So I will tell you, we do not, the Fraternal Order of Police and the Police Benevolent and Sheriff's and Police Alliance, they're very supportive of that, and, you know, our officers are very supportive. They had asked leading, when are we getting body worn cameras? So there's, they want these things, because they've also seen the value of in-car cameras, because we have had complaints on officers that have been completely made up, and we've been able to exonerate completely the officer based upon the in-car camera footage. And we've had people rescind complaints because we had in-car camera footage and they didn't realize it.
Thank you. Councilmember Abadi?
Yeah, so I just, I'm just a little bit concerned about the ramp-up time while the officers are learning, you know, camera on, camera off, et cetera. It doesn't seem to me, and I hope this would never happen, but it doesn't seem to me that the public is particularly trustful of the officer forgot to turn the camera on, the officer forgot, you know, that, that camera didn't work. And so I think that there's, that there, I think that's gonna be a lot of stress for the officer, and I think that no matter what type of public training we do, people are gonna expect that if an officer is wearing a body cam, that there's gonna be footage of an interaction. So I guess I'm just putting that out there, I, I mean, just as a member of the public, that'd be my expectation, and I don't think it would matter much to me, like, what you said about a ramp-up period.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, I guess I just want to put that out there, and, you know, and just, I know they'll make sure the training's as robust as possible.
Yes.
And is there any training by the company that makes these things, or is all the training...
Yes, I know, watch, watch guard actually comes in and they do the training on how to use the camera and, and, you know, the video and how to down, and what it, what it all does, in-car camera and body worn camera. Like I said, there is, Department of Justice puts out a great toolkit, a body worn camera toolkit, that literally it's training, it's, you know, they have, they have written out the training, they've done the policy, I mean, it's... And plus, International Association Chiefs of Police has a great website that is, that is accessible by law enforcement, that has all sorts of policies, has training guides, not just from Oakland Police Department, but police departments. I mean, there's, you know, in 20, 2016, forty-seven percent of the agencies across this country had body worn cameras. Ninety-five percent either had them or said that they were going to have them, you know, by a certain amount of time. So, I mean, it's, the policy is out there, the training guides are out there, we're not going to try and reinvent the wheel. We're gonna take what, what has been working for, for agencies.
And are these resources free, or would they be in addition to the cost of the cameras?
They're all free, yeah, they're all free.
Great presentation, and just to be clear, this was all in the FY20 budget from last year, so this is already happening. And then there'll be sort of ongoing maintenance costs in future budgets.
Yes.
Okay, so this was just more information and questions, there's no decision point for us at this time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is number three, administrative reports. We have Green Day planning, and we already received that, so if we have questions for Mr. Dickinson at this time, that would be appropriate.
While Steve's getting seated, I'll just go...
I need one.
Thank you. This was emailed to you earlier today, and we're passing around hard copies. This is, this is a follow-up from some of the discussions at the retreat regarding pre-preservation and ways to take our upcoming Green Day event and expand it. Such is the danger of me promising stuff without having talked to staff, because the fall is not the best time to plant trees, or spring. So we had a, a robust staff meeting to talk about ways, and this is the program that Steve, who's very familiar, has, and he can go over the highlights for you, and then we can respond to questions.
All yours.
All right, thank you. I'd like to talk to you about some of the proposed changes to our Green Day event. Our, although you're very familiar with our Green Day event, we usually spring and fall two per year. And so just wanted to incorporate some of the changes into it, that we've asked for more tree plantings, volunteer tree plantings in that event as well. We've gotten more towards the recycling end, kind of gotten away from the tree planting end, so we wanna get back to the tree planting end. So I wanna give you some more details on how we're gonna incorporate that back into our system, so... We've been doing the Green Day and Arbor Day events for quite a while. I'll give you a little bit of history behind it. I started here in 2006, and we were doing small Arbor Day events with just a small, one tree, one memorial tree in Town Hall, or one over at Shiloh, or one in Creek, and having a ceremony with that, and that was our Green Day event. And gradually got into larger volunteer plantings, and then finally added some of the shredding, e-recycling in like 2011. So we've been doing this for quite a while. We've also had a lot of volunteer tree planting projects over the years, that we've done a lot, most of the park areas. So we've added a lot of trees in Northwest Park, and planted all of Town Hall Drive, all of Moore's Parkway, and all of Grace Park, and, you know, Food Hub, and one of those areas, added it up. It looks like we planted about four hundred trees in the last fifteen years over the cross, through the town areas. So we've been keeping up with adding trees, we still need to get back to adding more. So what we thought was to add to our Green Day, which we have scheduled for Saturday, April 25th, was we'll keep the electronics and textile recycling the same for that Saturday. So we'll still have the very popular drive-through e-recycling and all of the paper shredding and all that, will still stay the same for that Saturday day. And we will also have a litter pick as well, you know, a group litter pick to go through. And we'll also have a stream cleanup as well, working with stormwater. So we'll have the three events that we've had done the last ten years for that Saturday. So we'll continue to do that for the Saturday event. What we were thinking was adding Arbor Day to the Friday before. Since the Friday before, on April 24th, is actually Arbor Day, that kind of falls in nicely to that. So we thought we'd bring back our, the Arbor Day celebration for that. So what I was proposing was having a staff and council volunteer event in the afternoon. We plant the ceremonial tree like we had previously, and then we have a Arbor Day proclamation. You can read us a Arbor Day proclamation that, you know, for, that we have done in the past. And then we'd like to use that afternoon to plant the annual flowers in all of the other planting beds around town. So all of, just in this complex here, on all the directional signs, and all of our Town Hall sign, and the six or eight beds that are across this year. Have a smaller group of twenty-five or thirty staff volunteers break up into smaller groups, and then each take a bed and plant all of our annual flowers, you know, for that afternoon. And then get together and possibly have some music in the park over at the Food Hub. I know Jerry was working on that, we had an idea on that, I don't know if we can swing it, you know? But it's possible that we could, you know, have that as an afternoon, if people want to stay late and go over to the Food Hub and go listen to some music after that, too. So that was what we were planning on that Friday for the spring Green Day. Now for the fall Green Day, since the fall is better time to plant trees, we're gonna have more of the larger planting event in the fall. So we'll still have the Saturday drive-through event with all the shredding and the e-recycling as we had before, but we'll also add the other volunteer planting component to that as well. So we're in the process of selecting some of the areas that would be good to add more trees across town, and then have volunteer groups come in and plant those trees on that Saturday, you know, as well. So we have, you know, our staff will add, you know, select areas that we can safely have them planted by volunteers and get four, five, six, or whatever trees planted each year. And we could also re-landscape some of the areas around public buildings, you know, redo the trees, thinking of that, or replacing dead or dying trees, some of the ones that we have died over the years, that we need to go back and replace those as well. And just enhancing a lot of other town grounds and park areas, too, that we could upgrade the trees or add trees to areas that don't have trees right now, so we can gradually go through and, you know, through the the greenways, park areas, all the new properties, we can add trees as we go. So that was the general idea for that, and there are some more details in the proposal there, you know, laying out how we have the drive-through and have kind of the different groups and volunteer groups, and some of the other, some of the other minor details of what we were planning to do in there, but that's kind of the overview of what we were planning to do.
It's a great presentation, yeah. Councilmember Abadi, you got us started, and then Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I love everything about this plan. I think this is a solid win, in my opinion. The only question I had was, where do we get the trees, and how much do they cost?
Usually, we get them locally. A lot of places, we either get them at Taylor Nursery in Raleigh, or even Site One, we've gotten a lot from them. And depending on the size of the tree, we've got usually a boll and burlap tree are a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, depending on the species of the tree, you know, maples are a little less expensive than some of the more ornamental... You know, maples are a little less expensive than some of the more ornamental areas or something like that. But roughly a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars for a two and a half, three-inch caliper, nice size.
That was actually my next question, because I thought I saw something when I read it this afternoon about planting deciduous native species. Did I say that this, what I was reading, or was it something else?
Yeah, might have been something else, but, you know, we can definitely, we usually stick with ones that do well, you know, here.
Yeah.
Maples and the areas and the, a lot of the ones out on Town Hall Drive are Princeton Elms.
Yeah.
The elves do fantastically out on, you know, streetscape areas, you know, hot, full-sun areas that you can handle the heat more so.
Well, thank you. Please convey my compliments back to your team. I really do think this is a great job.
Thanks. Councilmember Skoggins-Johnson, and Councilmember McGarrett Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that this is a great enhancement to the already existing fabulous Green Day. And to engage staff on a volunteer activity like this is a great enhancement, I believe. It also allows the council to engage with staff as well. So, it's, overall, the activity just has a lot of stars, in my opinion. I do have a question about a previous, or maybe it's still current, program where it's a grow with me tree or something. Do we still have that, and how are we sharing that information with?
That was done by the Planning Department.
Okay.
And I think it just stopped because of lack of interest, because there weren't a whole lot of people. They weren't having a whole lot of people sign up for it. So, they were giving away three trees or something, so it just kind of got pulled into the Green Day type of.
So, is there some opportunity to have some discussion about if, if the residents wanted a tree for their new, newest resident? Would, could we start that program, or what would you need from us in order to consider reintroducing something like that?
I think we definitely get it going, it's just a matter of interest in finding clientele, I guess, how many, you know, how many people would actually want to sign up for it.
It sounds, it sounds to me like there's multiple places for improvement. One is making it aware to the public, and also supporting it, making sure the program is supported properly. It could be in planning, it could be in, in Public Works. There has to be a little bit more conversation about that, yes.
And there is, Parks and Recreation is working on, I'll call it, an adopt a program of various things that I think it would fit in very well there. One of the challenges with the trees was with many homeowners associations, people are actually limited. And so, we do think that that resulted in some of the decline in the program, and then trees were not getting planted.
Right. So, maybe there's an option, if you can't, you know, if you live in a town home community that doesn't allow you to free plant your trees, you could adopt a tree or something like that. Also, I was wondering if it's possible to have a suggestion about, hey, a tree would go nice here, kind of thing? If someone could just, you know, either submit a comment, you know, through the regular portal and stuff like that, or, or some way, if we see a place that could use a little more love, you know, a bench, a tree, something like that. Somehow, we let people know that that is really welcome, and we can't guarantee, of course, because there's many factors, but we appreciate feedback like that. That's all I have.
Councilmember McGarrett Miller, and then Councilmember Fender, then Councilmember Rapp.
Yeah, Ricky stole the thunder from me, but it's okay, like, you know, I'm, I have the same thing. What does it take to have five thousand trees, you know, planted? The, the way I was thinking was, HOAs are bound by rules which are U D O adopted, too. You know, it's like having only one tree, but backyard, they don't care, you know? Like, I have several trees in my backyard, and it doesn't matter where you're growing a tree, as long as it's Morrisville. So, if we can start pushing, you know, can you plant a tree in your backyard somewhere, you know, it will grow? That way, it's easy to push that saying that our areas, you know, require a lot of trees. And I totally appreciate all the effort that you're doing, you know, in this. But I think the fact that we have only planted four hundred trees, and we cut at the rate of four hundred a week or a month, I don't know, depending on the subdivision which is going down. If, I don't, that's the reason, like, saplings, how much do they cost, you know? Are they expensive?
A few dollars. I mean, we, we did for many years as part of the Green Day event, had the sapling, if she can remember, the giveaways. We'd give away, you know, bare root saplings of, of oaks and maples and all of that, yeah. We'd give away those, and, you know, to go ahead and plant that in your backyard, or plant this, you know, in the area that you have to plant.
So, we give it away, and might be, they're dying or something, I don't know. Like, you know, if we can have a mechanism where, you know, okay, you gave it to Ricky, you know, after one year, hey, where, where does it stand, you know? So, at least, no, not the reason I'm saying is, we can do it, but some kind of policing is important, because if the trees grow, it's good for our, you know, area. Because I always feel when the clouds come in to Morrisville, they pretty much go this way, and it rains in Kerry and other areas. But if we can create that.
That's an option for the fall Green Day, to have more of the education areas that, the table with the setup, how to plant trees, and here are saplings, and here is stuff from the Forest Service, or from the Arbor Day Foundation, that you can get the bare root trees, and here's how to plant it, and here's the native species and all that, too. So, that is, you know, an option we could bring back.
It might be a small video, you know?
Yeah, there's plenty of information out there, that we've, we usually had the education component as well, as part of the, the fall Green Day that we did for, you know, many years as well, so we can definitely add that to it as well, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender?
Thank you for putting this together. I'll definitely be one of the ones volunteering for it.
Absolutely, yeah.
I do a lot of this stuff in my own house. One question I had was, is there a possibility of maxing in more perennials with those annuals? Because in the long run, it could be cheaper, and you could plant pollinators, like purple cone flowers, or butterfly bushes, bees balm. And then if you still want the annuals to provide the more color, you could intersperse them. So, is there a possibility where we could integrate perennials in with this planting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we have, and we just like it, just the annuals add a lot of color right then and there, and we can switch them out twice a year. You have a lot more color on those hyperfocalized areas, and keep a lot of the perennials to a lot of the other park areas, that you can put a larger area to those and have a larger field of pollinator, butterfly gardens and stuff like that, too.
I'm guessing you've included these signs, these pictures in here, these signs as areas that would have plants around them?
Yes, those have been, all those signs have been remodeled, but all of those had planting beds.
Okay.
Those previously, that we've had all the little bulbs in those, all the bulbs that are coming up now. We can really put panties, petunias, or, you know, all the rest of the grasses and stuff in there each year, you know, switch it out in the fall. In November, we do the same thing, switch it out for winter, you know, plantings.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, if you plant perennials, you would have pollinators, and it'd be cheaper, because you'd have, over the years, you wouldn't have to be planting as many annuals as well. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rapp, please?
Um, we, this is a great, this is a great program, and I want to thank Councilmember Fender Robati for bringing this up, being so passionate about this tree and retreat. I think it's always great to bring these kinds of ideas forward. My question is, you talked about twenty-five staff and council volunteers. Is there any chance eventually to have additional events where we could involve our youth councils? Either at this event, or maybe over the course, just to get re-engaged, team council, and it'd be a good.
I believe they are already involved in that.
They're already, so they'd be involved, they could be involved in planting these trees?
Yes, yes. I just had it at twenty-five, because that's a good number. We only have six or eight beds here to plant. So, it's a few hours of groups of five, you don't have a group of a hundred.
Okay, yeah.
We haven't afforded for twenty or twenty-five people.
Yeah, twenty-five.
So, we're eliminating to a smaller group for that staff involvement. But we've done larger groups, these were actually planted, the flowers are out there now, were planted by the Thales Academy, you know, in the spring, and, you know, in the fall. So, we've had a large, large groups of a hundred and fifty kids, you know, come out and, you know, plant and mulch and do all that, too. So, we've had other large school groups come in, and we've had the other, the other youth council helping with other volunteer projects as well, too.
Thank you. Yeah, and you had mentioned that maybe the fall would be an opportunity to have more groups, and more different satellite, satellite places. Is, have you looked into the Tree City designation? Would this roll into getting us towards something like that, perhaps?
It is, that's a.
I know you have to celebrate Arbor Day.
Yeah, you have to celebrate Arbor Day. Yeah, there are a lot of standards for that Tree City. Whether we're large enough for that designation, we'll have to, we'll have to see, because you need like a staff arborist and, you know, kind of a lot of those things, you know, in place to be able to have that designation. So, we might not have enough trees in our, as of yet, that, you know, so.
So, that's maybe something to aspire to.
Find more places to plant trees, that's what we can do.
And that is a per capita budget requirement, too.
Yeah.
Okay, great, that was my question. This is great, looking forward to it now and in the fall. And then Councilmember Johnson, and then you can go back to Councilmember Robati.
So, I just want to thank you, Steve, very much for giving us an update on where this program has been, how far we've come, and going back to planting trees, back to planting flowers. Parks and Rec Department's been doing this for years, too. So, I don't know if you counted in the work that they've done into your numbers, but they've also gone out and, and worked in our parks. So, so, thank you for bringing this up. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate the, the idea of having the public weigh-in and giving them an opportunity to tell us where they would like to see. I think that's a great idea, too. And I also was gonna bring up the idea about the saplings, that we used to give out the saplings. And I will tell you, I took one one year, and I babyed that poor little thing, but I killed it. So, and, and I pride myself on what I do in my backyard, so it kills me to have to say this publicly, but, so if we could maybe look to getting those again, and I know there's other programs. W R L used to do a program with azaleas, they give you free azaleas, and so, but, but maybe to do it more on our property, on town property, so that we can really monitor it and make sure people like me don't kill the, the, the plants that we have. Because that's, the whole idea is to keep this program going and keep these trees and flowers and shrubs and whatever alive. So, and that's all I really want to say. And I just want to say, we don't really get to see Steve that often, you don't come to council meetings that often, so I really want to say thank you. He, he was very modest, you were very modest, Steve, about the work that you've done in the town, and all that you've done for us to beautify this town. So, you know, you, you're an integral part of these programs that we're talking about with Green Days in the fall and the spring litter sweeps and all that. But you've done a fabulous job. You talked about, you talked about Morrisville Parkway, Town Hall Drive, the old Christian church, that was all your handiwork. So, you, you can find his, his thumbprint all across town. So, thank you, we really appreciate it very much.
Councilmember Robati?
Thank you for balancing out Councilmember Johnson's black thumb with your green thumb. We all appreciate that. Yeah, I just thought that when, when Councilmember Skoggins-Johnson was just saying about, you know, people calling in and, you know, like, how are the trees doing and stuff like that? I was thinking that it might be cool if there was an app for that. And if, you know, if you could dedicate a tree to somebody, or if you, if you paid for a tree and, and the Parks Department would plant one, and there could be an app for it, and, I mean, you could turn that into a scouting badge pretty easily for girl or boy scouts, or, I mean, and I think that probably there's a kid over at Wake Tech that would program it for us for free, just for the experience and, and as a resident holder. So, just, anyway, that was just an idea, so.
Well, so, thank you very much. We're looking forward to continuing to enhance these programs. So, thank you very much for hearing us at the retreat and really bringing this forward. Great job by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, next item, we'll move on to number four. Yep, we'll take a ten-minute break, I was just gonna set the table, that we'll come back in ten minutes, so eight oh five, to talk about for A, A, classification review and personnel, and I think there's a handout. So, back at eight oh five first. Session, we're at discussion item four A, pay, classification review and personnel. I'll pass it to Town Manager Martha Page at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. This looks like a big presentation, and, and it is, but a lot of it was put in here mostly as a refresher for some, and perhaps some new, more in-depth stuff that just underlies the context of some of the work that we've done this year. If you could, if you could allow me to just talk and share information, and then I'll pause periodically, so that we can keep it moving to get to the important stuff. So, thank you. I have provided the discussion topics, the things we're gonna talk about, we mentioned in the budget, I'm just gonna go right to that section, that, that we have been talking about recruitment and retention all year. This was actually something that I talked about in our budget document last year, that, that we, we know we're having this issue. It is not a just town of Morrisville issue, this is a local government issue that we're all sort of grappling with. So, one of the things that we know is, is we've got a pay philosophy that we've been following. It's not a formal document in and of itself, but it's part of our personnel policies and how we hire and the things that we do. And it's just an outdated document at this point. The, the economy and the competitive nature of the market out there is just changing so quickly, we know that that's outdated. So, we also know that our salaries are falling behind. We talked about that last year. We made some adjustments in public safety last year that I'm gonna mention. When we've been doing a one-third study every year, we've been adjusting our pay plan, but not the salaries of our employees. So, that hasn't translated into real dollars for any of our employees. And then our merit pay system also relates to employees not being able to advance through our pay plan. We're, we're not keeping pace with the economy, we're not keeping pace with our competition, we're not keeping pace with just the market in general. So, they don't advance through that pay range. We adjust our pay ranges so they keep falling back to their relative position in the pay plan. That's frustrating for an employee with tenure. Because of our organization being relatively small and flat, there's just limited promotional opportunities within our organization. That, that's, that's just a fact, that we, we couldn't create promotional opportunities where they don't exist, but, but that's just one of the factors that affects our organization. Our workload continues to increase, there are some things that increase just by virtue of the growth of the town, as well as the workload projects we're putting on our staff. We are really experiencing reduced fields of applicants for just about any job that we recruit for. Part of that's because people aren't entering the profession, part of it, again, is they can get paid much higher jobs. And we are just in a very competitive region, we've talked about that and a lot of factors, but, but clearly, at this point, we are stealing employees from each other. We get stolen from, we're stealing from others. And, and we see that, at this point, we're even experiencing that we have people directly calling our employees to recruit them away from employment here, to get them, because they have vacancies. So, that is occurring in our organization. So, we started addressing some of this in fiscal year nineteen, primarily focused on our public safety employees, both our police and our fire. We made some adjustments to their actual salaries a year ago. This was something that council had given me some authority to make some market adjustments for public safety last year. For police in particular, we, we started implementing the fact that they did not have to come in at an entry level, that they could get some credit for prior experience. We, we did some scaled market adjustments for people with some tenure, and we, Chief Pretty and Chief Andrews developed some specialization incentive pay that the officers really appreciated, and gave them some extra dollars. And it gave us skill sets in the department that we can use effectively. For fire, we did some scaled market adjustments for tenure, and Chief, one of Chief Krittl's primary initiatives was updating their career and promotion plan to prepare people for promotion within the fire ranks. to prepare people for promotion within the fire ranks. For inspections, inspectors, uh, we developed a career ladder, whereas rather than, uh, needing to get promoted, they could get some incentives for getting those trade certifications. There are four different certifications that they can get at three different levels. So as they train, study, and pass tests, and you see those often now in these notes when that's occurring with our inspection staff, they're getting, uh, an incentive pay adjustment, uh, for those certifications. And all of those things have, have really helped. They appreciate, appreciated them, obviously, just a little morale booster that we care about them and helped, did to help stem some of the loss of our officers and firefighters to some other organizations. The other thing we often hear is, of course, the healthcare costs. That's always something we grapple with, um, that, uh, doesn't matter if you increase their pay 3%, if you increase their medical premiums 10%. So we're always watching that kind of correlation for all of our employees. And then our merit system up until last year was 2%, 3%, and 4%, uh, which, uh, two of those weren't even keeping pace with what just inflation was here. So one of the things that I included in my budget message last year was the recommendation to sort of do a complete review of our job classification. This first slide really does, if, if you aren't familiar with what a job classification does, but it, it's a, it's a right sizing of the job for a variety of skill sets, and it allows us to be comparable externally to our peers and internally across departments for various jobs. And it takes a variety of factors into consideration to do that process. We've been, yeah, we've been doing this, uh, for years, since really 2009, where about a third of the positions are looked at every year and, and they rotate through. Uh, we have an external HR consultant and somebody that did this in their, their former career that, that manages this for us, it gives us independence, it gives us objectivity. But just as important is insights into what other communities do and really comparability of jobs. So one of those factors is, we can call something a customer service agent, for example, and somebody else could have a customer service agent. Titles is not where you compare. You really have to know what the job does in order to make sure it's comparable. It's a very robust process that, that Lori and her staff manage. Every employee that's in the study fills out a questionnaire. And we have two versions, a long and a short. A long is if the job has significantly changed or is new to our organization. A short is if it's been completed before and you're really updating it. And it includes your key job responsibilities and the amount of time that you, uh, spend on those activities. So it is not a job description, it's not a laundry list of anything and everything you could possibly do, but the, the big items, uh, that is completed by an employee. The supervisor reviews it, it goes to HR, HR does a review, and then they are shipped to that consultant. He reviews those and then conducts employee interviews. There's an iterative process to make sure we're gathering all the information we need to look at these jobs. Once that process is done, the consultant is going out to look at, at those pay range comparisons, our own internal job equity, and, and then comes back, reviews that report with HR, with, with senior management staff, and then has that conversation, again, back with the department head to make sure nothing's been missed in that whole process. So this is, this is not a quick or easy. Uh, we have typically done this in January, uh, and we are done with it at this point. So we, we accelerated it to make sure that we had this information now. You typically see things related to the job classification and pay plan at budget, where a job here or there will change on that pay plan or when we make recommendations to adjustments to the pay plan itself. The pay plan is not actual salaries, it's just our hiring range generally for employees. What are the specific kinds of things that that position study considers? Knowledge and skills necessary for the job, the education and the training requirements, the level of decision-making, uh, and independence in those decisions an employee makes, and in some cases, the consequences of those decisions. The supervisory, uh, level in the span of control, and then just what is the level of responsibility. It also, for us, helps us review or develop job descriptions and to make those compensation management decisions that we're talking about right now. Typically, we have implemented any position study impacts at the beginning of a new fiscal year. Pay adjustments, so actually going to the employees, have only been awarded if a employee's actual salary falls below the range that they are currently at. We have made no adjustments for market conditions or changes in classification for employees. And really what that results in is a lot of pay compression in our salary ranges. So I'm going to pause right there and see if there's any questions about just the history of what we've done. Councilmember Robati?
Is 2% a market standard for a...
And I'm going to talk more about that in a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just one more question, actually. Historically, what's been the amount of time spent by supervisors, um, talking to employees about their career plans, their, um, you know, like a training plan to get them to the step they want to go to, like that kind of thing? What, what would you say is the percentage of talent?
I don't know that I could tell you a percentage, but it is part of our goal-setting and review processes with employees at least once a year, and, and sometimes more often. And we'll cover that a little bit again as well. Lori, anything to add that you think I missed? Okay, so let's talk about what we've done this year. Uh, I mentioned it, all positions were reviewed except those that were vacant. It was done earlier this year so that, that we could get, you know, good data right away. We focused much more on Wake County than perhaps has been done in the past. We have often been compared to just municipalities of a similar size. That is not effective if we're being compared to something in western North Carolina. Uh, so, uh, we, uh, really, uh, I'll say weighted the, the peer comparisons more in Wake County. It is where we get and lose employees. Um, there, there was still a focus, I mean, we're not trying to compete with a Charlotte. So there was still some focus on right sizing of municipalities. Really, again, have to look at some emphasis on the public safety pay and position alignment. Uh, over 50% of our employees are public safety. And that is where, as you'll see, we lose quicker. Uh, and then we did some actual direct pay comparison to, to, to depart, for department head ranks. And, and you'll see why we felt that was necessary in a little bit. There were also some other key positions that are, are unique or that, that we, uh, feel the scope and breadth of the position in Morrisville may be significantly different than what it had been compared to in the past. So there were some compete, key positions. If you want me to tell you what examples are, um, IT is probably the best example of that. So what were our findings? Uh, our police and fire. All of our sworn and certified positions were at least one pay classification behind. So correlate that to roughly, our pay classification is in a 5% increment. So right, right at the start, 5% off from the rest of the market. Some of them were also two or three grades behind some of the, the, the positions within police and fire. So example, fire captains would be one. And fire engineers, those that drive the vehicles, uh, were, were out of sort there. Our human resources staff, Nate and Chuck are both two to three grades behind where they are in peer comparisons. Stormwater and engineering, similar, most one behind, some two grades behind. And then there are other miscellaneous positions that, that, that is pervading throughout the organization. Our department heads are substantially behind market. Some are at 65% of what they could get somewhere else. And there's, there's a range there. So, um, I'm going to pause. Any specific questions about the fiscal year 20 study? Councilmember Bender?
I've got two questions. What about planners?
Planners were better, and there's a reason why, because there's been turnover. And so we've been forced into that paying more to get some of those positions fit.
Okay. And then my second question, because you say, um, all positions reviewed excluding vacant. Wouldn't you want to review those?
We will next year.
Okay.
All right. So I talked a little bit about a pay philosophy and the fact that we don't have this formal document, but we've got some practices that we've been following. Again, uh, a lot of, uh, the recommendations and requests related to our personnel come to you, uh, during, um, the, uh, budget process. I, I, I don't and won't unilaterally start adjusting people's salaries, uh, across a board without having this conversation with council. So, uh, don't do a lot of that. It's, it's, it's not a good practice, it's not a defensible practice without some logic and rationale to do that. So when that's occurred, it's, it's really typically been to attempt to keep an employee that has, um, already got a job offer and may be mostly out the door already. We have been adjusting our pay plan range to try to recruit effectively. It, it just has this other adverse impact on actual salaries for people, uh, that are in the system. I mentioned, we, we have, we have followed a pattern of hiring, uh, at or near the minimum with, uh, limited negotiation ability. And that may sound shortsighted, but remember, when you hire someone in at much higher, you've got a whole bunch of people in your system already that don't feel good about that, that they know they could quit and come back and get more money. So that there's, there are at least reasons why that has occurred. Um, and I mentioned, we haven't done much market adjustment to retain employees. Um, and, uh, we are limited in our response to the market that we're working in. And, and you've heard Lori say that, especially before, things are changing so rapidly, that it, it's been difficult to, to sort of keep up and manage. And just here, we have a whole series of part-time employees. I'm really focusing on full-time employees. We evaluate our part-time pay plan here, but this discussion is really about our full-time employees. So a little bit about, uh, our, our merit pay philosophy. Uh, we have a pay-for-performance merit pay plan, uh, that is in existence. We, um, we do not offer a COLA, most don't. Most are merit-based. Uh, there are some models out there that are a little bit of a hybrid, but most are, uh, merit-based systems. We have a three-tiered scale of meets expectations, exceeds, and far exceeds. And, and there's a sort of a standard curve of, uh, where you expect employees to fall. So for example, we think all our employees are good, but you're going to have a certain percentage that's going to usually be at that meets expectations level, then a certain percentage that's going to be at the far exceeds, and then that, that really far exceeds. There's a really, really high standard for that. And, and so, uh, there's an even supplemental review process to make sure that it's not just, oh, I want to give this employee more money. So a really robust system behind that, uh, to, to get to that high standard. That was mostly the complaint with our 2, 3, 4 system. And, and I hate for it to sound this way, but it's like, why should I work all that extra hard for one more percent? So that was what really led to the request and the, the appreciation to council for adjusting that last year to 2, 4, and 6. We do do our evaluations annually. We have linked them to our, our fiscal year work plan goals and performance and the strategic plan. Uh, and, uh, I mentioned the 2, 4, and 6. Before the 2, 3, 4, um, not even all of the merit award went into a base salary. And that's important for a local government employee to be able to build that base. So that changed a couple of years after I got here. And then last year is when it changed from the 2, 3, 4 to the 2, 4, 6.
But is the 6% the totality of the employees' increase?
Correct.
Or is there, so 6%?
Correct.
For, for exceeds.
So $2,400 on 40,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, so our, just, and just a little bit about our, uh, performance evaluations. That process in itself is very robust and time-consuming. Again, both the employee and the supervisor, and then a review supervisor are involved in that process. Uh, we have four job families. So what I'm saying there is the, uh, performance evaluation instrument is somewhat tailored to the type of job. So manager supervisor would be different than a, a technical position that is not supervising, just as an example. Then, um, each of the position, the, the, um, performance evaluations has three areas. There's a goal area, there is a core competency, which are those that are in our strategic plan and are the same for all employees, and then job family competencies. And, and they're weighted, um, to, to reflect, uh, the, the value of the goal and the value of the competency. I mentioned, we have a pretty robust process with that. We start setting goals as soon as the budget's adopted. Those are really formalized through meetings with employees and supervisors in that July, August timeframe. That does not mean we're not starting to work on goals till they're in the system. We know from a budget adoption what we're going to be working on the next year. So it's just getting it documented and quantified into a system. Again, the fact that that's a joint process is very important. So the employee knows what they need to do, and the supervisor is asked to ensure that they know what the employee needs to be successful in the accomplishment of their goals. Uh, there are, uh, opportunities and, uh, support for tracking things. Both an employee and a supervisor have a way to document things that occur during the year in a system so they don't forget them. Uh, employee, supervisors are encouraged to do mid-year check-ins with their employees so that employees not too far off track before it would be too late to deal with. Uh, the, all of these processes are written and acknowledged and discussed with the employee and by the employee. If things are not going well, we have progressive warning plans and improvement plans to help an employee be on the right track. We have processes for employees that come on board out of a cycle of a fiscal year. We prorate merit, uh, for a partial year service. They don't have to wait till a full fiscal year to get, uh, some pay adjustment. And again, I've mentioned that HR, uh, reviews, uh, those far exceeds across the organization to make sure there's consistency in the level. I acknowledge, uh, some of us, all of us perhaps, uh, recognize that it's a time-consuming and, and it feels burdensome sometimes, but, uh, it is important to, to have those conversations with the employee. Um, so I'm going to pause again. Any questions about what we've been doing? Councilmember Johnson?
So I'm going to, I've been sitting here trying to figure out a way to word this so it makes sense. So just bear with me, but, so, um, so we have employees that don't meet expectations?
We are very fortunate that we have very few that, that that is the case.
Okay.
Very few.
Okay, and then we have employees that just meet, which is fine. That means you're doing what we expect of you. And then we have those two categories where they far, far exceed and far exceed. So if you're going to do a pay classification adjustment or a pay adjustment, are we making sure that the, the people that far exceed and got that 6% are retaining that? Or is that pay classification just bringing everybody up to a... I'm trying to figure out how to not have this happen over and over. How to, how to correct this?
So the pay classification is the... So the pay classification is the job. The merit is the employee. So there's really two components. They have to be-
But there's also an adjustment in the salary range. You're asking, you're going to be asking for an adjustment in the salary range. That's where I'm headed.
Yes, I am.
I know you are.
So employees, so think about it this way. If Lori and I have the same job and are being rated by the same supervisor, and she gets that three and I get the one, her salary's going to go above mine. And that's going to continue to occur.
Even with a salary adjustment, you're making sure-
Even with a classification or a market adjustment, yes. In that case, which I'll get to, so let's say you say, okay, give me a market adjustment. We'll both go like that.
Got it. Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. Okay.
Good.
Is there a bonus structure or anything of any type?
Bonuses are not a local government thing. That is a private sector function. And again, that's sort of the arbitrary feel of how, we don't, we don't have a mechanism that says how a bonus would be awarded. So it would just be arbitrary.
And what about, what about, I don't know, like, not an award is the wrong word, but like when, like you took people out of town for most of three days, and if they're salaried employees, you know, do they get a, I mean, not a bonus, but are they compensated for that in some way? Or?
I'm very liberal and flexible about allowing those employees to recoup that time in a way that works for them.
It kind of comes with the job.
It does.
When you, when you work for local government, you work at night. You know, you just kind of know that comes with the job. But I think Martha answered that question pretty normally.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, it comes, I mean, working at night obviously comes with the job and stuff like that. I mean, I'm just saying that I think that if you're going to spend three days out of town, that's, I feel like that's a little bit above and beyond the call. Like, that's just an example, you know? Or like when, like budget time, when you spend, you know, 20 hours a day here and you don't, you know, you have like a cot rolled into your office.
So an example, that would be where, that's one of those factors in that, what that job requires in the job description that's going to end up putting you at some level of classification. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, I understand.
And we do, in most cases, they are exempt employees, so they're at a higher level where they don't accrue comp time or overtime, but the town does permit them to accrue PTO. So that's a benefit for them. That's not required. And they can earn up to 80 hours. So we do have many employees at that level that work a lot more than 80 hours extra in the year, but that does permit some kind of recruitment of that time that they can then use at their choosing. And that's in addition to their accrued vacation. That is a benefit that is very much appreciated by staff at that level because they are working 80-plus extra hours, but that allows them to use that time when they choose to.
So it's like standard vacation, like two weeks and then 80 additional hours?
And they can accrue that, they can use that throughout the year, and then it will reset, and then they can, you know, reaccrue it each year. So that's just something additional in recognition of those extra hours that they're working.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I, we have some proposed changes to, as someone's already mentioned, avoid getting here again, or perhaps maybe just, we are going to get here again.
Yes.
But not maybe as far out as what I feel like we're at now. So the one-third review is actually probably a best practice. So we, we support continuing to do that. We did 100% this year, but don't need to do that and probably don't want to do it that often. A three-year cycle does typically allow you to adjust with the market. We're just in a different place right now, and we hadn't done that for so long. We do have a lot of new jobs and a lot of things changing here in Worswell, too, that made it more important to do this year. We do suggest that maybe a closer review of our public safety positions annually is probably warranted right now. Because we're going to continue to react to what somebody else does in reaction to what we're doing. It's just the way it is. So we think benchmarking our public safety salaries annually might be a good idea. We would add, and we do this as a normal part of our process, just where we find that we're experiencing those recruitment challenges, make sure that we're looking at those on a basis. Lori has a plan of cycle, but she can move people in it, or positions in and out to look at as necessary to accomplish that. Develop some compensation strategies related to if there is a classification change. That's that one or two, three grade change that I mentioned. We are recommending taking the department heads out of the pay plan and calling them non-graded. That will help for both recruitment and retention. The most recent example is the competitive salaries for probably our public works, our town engineer, and our planning director. And just not have, just posting a salary range influences who applies for a job. So the recommendation that department heads are not graded, to really be market-driven. If you looked at the CARRY pay plan, their department heads are not in their pay plan. So there's a very close by example of that. And then supporting out-of-cycle market adjustments when necessary for retention. And having that as a philosophical approach. For merit, I would like to propose, recommend, request that we increase the merit award from two, four, six to three, five, seven. I did, I did the analysis last year when I made the recommendation last year. I have not updated it this year and can and will as a part of the budget process, but it is not incrementally significantly different than what, it sounds bigger, but it's not a lot bigger in actual dollars as related to what our total payroll is. We would continue to control that far exceeds rating to continue to make sure that those high standards are associated with that rating. Support career ladder development where appropriate. An example of where I could see that, and this wouldn't be something Lori and I would do without department head input, but this could work for planners. This could work for engineering technicians. There are, this could work in our public works departments, that they're able to earn awards outside of the merit system. The performance evaluations, I think Lori and I would both love to review and revamp our performance evaluation, just not this year. We are in the middle of that Munis HR. We'd like that implemented before we change a performance evaluation instrument so that it's going through that system. And then we'd like to propose some extra consulting, consultant money for real succession planning. Lori and I have all say dabbled at it, and we do pieces of it, but we need a comprehensive plan to prepare for future leaders of some of our departments to cultivate them and ensure that our internal applicants are effectively competing for those jobs.
Excuse me, Martha. Does that three, five, seven, does that bring us into a market, like, does that bring us people to the rest of the market nearby or in Wake County?
There are ranges across all of municipalities and the counties of what they do. So when you hear the comparisons, and again, we start collecting this information at budget, you will hear talk of an average annual merit. And in this case, with a, so thinking back, and you can help me, with our two, four, six that we implemented this past year, our average annual merit was 3.64, because you average all of those threes, fours, and fives, or those one, two, and three ratings to get to that three, four, five. I would expect this is going to fall somewhere in the range of four-plus percent with this change, which is what I would expect it to be, and what I expect we might hear from others. Again, there's all kinds of different models out there. You've got a CARRY that is going to pay whatever it takes to get an employee. I don't know that we think that's our right strategy. We want to be at the table, not behind or underneath the table.
Just follow up on that, just to make, just to make sure we're, so this three, five, seven doesn't get us to market range? I think that was more-
I think that, yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, but that's-
You still want to pay adjustment?
These are merit rewards, so-
Yes, I've got a whole series of recommendations here.
This alone, it's, there's multiple pieces to this ask. This is only one.
Right, sure. But what I'm asking is, is the five, seven, nine specifically, is that on target with other municipalities? That's what I'm asking. So if this is going to, you know, like, is it the same across Wake County? Is it the same across municipalities of our size? You know, I just want to understand, like, this compensation structure specifically for merit increases, is that market range?
So the answer is, everybody has their own plan.
Okay.
And we, we offer other things that, it's not one thing. We offer other things that other municipalities don't offer to their employees. So you have to, when you hear total compensation, you have to look at everything. Salary is a major component, but not the only component.
Yeah, it's not always apples to apples. So there's nuances always.
I've got a question about this two, what, three, four, seven, or three, five, seven?
I heard five, seven, nine.
That's next year. Is that what I said? I'm sorry.
Do you have, like, in my place, they say only 10% of the people can come into that far, far exceed. And then you have, you know, like, 30% and then 40%. So is that how you treat, like, in your scale? Because if, the reason I'm saying is, suppose if you have 100 employees, only 10 can come there. So it's very competitive to go and hit into that.
So we do not have those mandated levels, but I have also described to you, we accomplish that high standard for that highest level in other ways.
Example?
This high level of review of anything that, if an employee is rated far exceeds expectations, it automatically comes to Lori's inbox before it's ever discussed with the employee.
I get it. What I mean to say, if, what I'm trying to understand, out of 100 employees, if 50 employees are doing far exceed, are you going to award all the 50 employees that far exceed? Or, you know, like, just that 10%? I'm just going to give you an example, because that's where it becomes so competitive in our own teams, that to hit into that bucket, you had to do something really-
And I understand, and I just have to say again, we are not private sector.
I get it, but I just wanted to-
We don't even encourage that level of competitiveness with each other. It is the reward, the internal and intrinsic award. That's why you have local government employees in the first place, is the self-improvement, the intrinsic value of the job, the giving back to the community, the serving the public that is a good, high-quality local government employee. So we're off in the weeds already on this. You know, we have employees that think if they answer the phone 800 times, that's a three. We don't think that. It's the quality of the call and meeting the need of the cut. So that's the reinforced training and supervision and review process to ensure far exceeds really means far exceeds.
And so we don't say in a certain department or say, you know, only you can have one, three, or dictate it on the front end. Where we look at it is setting the expectation on the front end of being clear about what is a one, what is a two, what is a three, and we have that actually built in so that when the employee and the supervisor, because the employee will do their self-evaluation, and the employee does their evaluation, we have at each of those categories so they can see what is a meets, what kinds of behaviors and things should they be doing, what is an exceeds. So we're constantly kind of reinforcing that a meets is very valuable in this organization. It is not just coming to work every day. There's a whole litany of things that pertain to that job description that they should be doing to even have a meets. That's something to be proud of. And then on the back end, when that supervisor comes up with that evaluation, it is, so they create it. First, there's input from the employee, then they create the evaluation, then it goes up one level for review and back to that supervisor. So there's two supervisors talking about that and making sure that they both agree with that review before it ever goes to the employee. If it's a three, there's even another set of review in addition. So before it even comes to me, that department head is saying, I agree this is a three. And I think they, most importantly, they have the information in there to support it. And we're all about, don't just give someone even a one. Tell me why. What, what did they do in that particular year to earn that rating? And so it's all built into a process so that we don't dictate on the front end, but we do reinforce and review and have controls in place really throughout and then the back end.
I think I got my answer when you said you, on the front end, you didn't put it. So that's pretty much-
Yeah.
For us, for us, we have a pot of money that is circulated around the department heads, and then they compete for that money. So that's not the case in yours.
No, we don't do it that way.
So that's a different style. Okay, got it.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So what are the recommendations that I'd like to make? So this, this is real dollars that we're talking about needing to, to get out of our budget. So for a one-grade change in classification for those employees that that happened, and again, that's all of our public safety employees, at least one. A two, I'm sorry, I skipped, 2% market adjustment for all employees. So that's just whatever they're making, they would get a 2% adjustment to the salary. That would be, I would recommend employees that were hired before December 31st of 2019. And there's rationale for that, too, which is spacing of changes for what we would be hiring someone next month or the month after, or when we would change our pay plan. So that's, that's, people that have been hired more recently, we have employed some of these market mechanisms already. So they should be closer to the market. Then related to the job classification review, if the classification of your position changed by one grade, translating that into a two and a half percent market adjustment on top of the 2%. And if it changed two or three grades, a 5% salary adjustment on top of the 2%. Just, if you ask, why two, three? There, I think there were three people that had a three pay grade adjustment. They're some of the higher paid, so less differential there. Department head market adjustments, I've made recommendations really from none, and there's reasons why. I do not want to talk about specific employees or recommendations in an open session, and I'm sure you all understand and appreciate why. But some are not necessary. I will offer that to a significant 20% for a couple of our department, our key department heads. I'm requesting to implement these recommendations retroactive to January 1st. We have several titles that just need updated to accurately reflect what they do. And then with the budget, I would again recommend that we change our pay plan, hiring ranges for recruitment up to 2%, which we've done most years of the last four or five years. So what does that cost us if we implement these recommendations? So there are a number, I mentioned, if an employee falls below the range, there are a number of employees that that hap- a number of employees that that happens, so the adjustments for those are $56,000. The changes for all of these market adjustments that I'm making or requesting for the classification change, including the department heads, is $305,000. And then the market adjustment, which is the 2% for everybody, is about $247,000 in salaries, so totaling $608,000. There's benefit costs to the employer for that, taxes that we have to pay, and the contributions to our retirement plan that are based on salaries of about $158,000. So a total year impact of just these recommendations is $766,000. The half-year implementation cost for this year would be $383,000 for our overall payroll, which is currently right around $12 million for all of our employees' base full-time That's about a 5% increase in that cost overall. It will allow us to address some compression issues immediately. Obviously, I am not included in this, but every other employee is. And we do not feel, given our lapse salary this year, that we need additional money to fund it this year, that there's lapse salary capacity. And you see that every year, too, where we haven't fully spent our payroll budget to absorb these increases if they were implemented this year. I'll pause again. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes. I appreciate the breakout of all of the different adjustments that you've just described. The one thing that resonated with me, though, is a point you made earlier in the presentation relating to negotiating of new hires. And we've had recruitment challenges because our ranges have been posted and so forth. Are we giving you a better toolset with your recommendation on negotiation? Or is that something that you left out until next time?
No, I'd say, in particular with key positions, that the flexibility of a non-graded department head does allow us to also post it a little bit differently and attract more clients. I also mentioned, we have already started moving away from just that entry level as we bring in new staff, as Councilmember Fender mentioned. That actually sort of occurred very naturally in planning because we've had so much turnover there that we weren't getting people that we could hire in. And there's been some other incidents of that. Some of these recommendations are also linked to the fact that we know what we've had to pay to get some positions in. So we could potentially be recruiting differently. We used to only post the front end of our salary range, and we had already started moving away from that to show the whole range at least.
Thank you.
So Tish, are you still up?
Okay. So let's...
I'm sorry. That's okay. So I just want to... You said that you weren't included in this, but in this plan, but I think that's absurd. So, I mean, I understand you want to...
You're battling to be my favorite council member, but I am taken care of in a different process. I'm already not in the pay plan.
Oh, okay.
But maybe I felt like I was stating the obvious. Council takes care of that.
Yeah, sister, nothing is obvious to me.
Okay.
She has a... We have a separate contract with Martha.
Oh, okay.
Separate.
Yeah. Martha, you've got to explain everything. I want to just throw facts out there.
Five, seven, no, two. Keeps going up. All right, just a couple other topics since this is sort of...
Eventually, we have to talk about the other side of this equation.
Total compensation. Our healthcare, again, we're at the very front end of that process. I continue to tell you that NSHIP is working well to manage our cost increases. That said, we're looking at about a 6% increase this year. There's two primary reasons. We've had a lot, for Morrisville, a lot of high-cost claimants. And what I can tell you is, is we've seen that fortunately or unfortunately for us right now, we are one of the municipalities that is benefiting by the shared rate from all the others. So they're contributing towards our costs at this point in time. We've also not, because of those high-cost claimants, not been able to build up our reserve cushion that further protects us from future year increases. So we're... It's not final yet. We're still looking at some stuff, but with our current plans, et cetera, we're looking at about 6%. We are starting, we've asked about a high-cost deductible plan, just to gather information and see if that is something that we should be offering. Affordable employee healthcare contributions is part of that total compensation. If we adjust these salaries and then say, and we're increasing your healthcare premium 6%, we've accomplished nothing for them. So I am recommending we absorb that. Again, we can. And our open enrollment would be coming up in April and May to do that, as we look at that. And that's our pretty typical time. Just a reminder, and this is one of the things Councilmember Robati, we offer a 5% employer-sponsored 401K to our employees, that we contribute to a 401K plan on their behalf. Not a lot of municipalities do that. So that's an added benefit that we offer to our employees. The Elders, which is the local government and employee retirement system, you heard substantial information last year about how the investment rate of return is not meeting their projections for what they need to fund the plan. So they had put in place last year a scaled increase every year, so I believe our contributions increased another 1.5% this year. That's our cost. We're precluded from passing that along to the employees, so that's our cost. Lori, are you going to provide a parental leave update?
Yep.
Okay. I'll come back to that.
Okay.
If you haven't heard or remember pension spiking, there's also a provision where the government retirement system has a process that spits out for probably any employee over $100,000 that has had some pay adjustments, a calculation of whether they're going to have contributed enough to get the actuarial retirement benefits that they think they're going to get. And we get that letter every month. We have three employees on that list right now. It doesn't mean they're pension spikers. I even actually hate that term. It's an early warning notice that we get. One, two, two of those employees are in this room? Is it two?
Two.
Two of the employees that are on that list are in this room. You might be able to figure out who they are. But it's just a notice. Again, the purpose of that legislation is so, as I'm getting close to retirement, you don't hike my salary really, really high to increase my future retirement benefits when I haven't contributed to the system to help pay for that. So that's the philosophy there. It's something that HR monitors every month, but it does not mean that we have pension spikers. And I think my understanding is, there was actually some legislation put forth to make some modifications to that, but it got caught up in the veto of the budget bill. So that had not occurred. And then we are getting our employee survey ready to go out. This isn't a do you love Morrisville. It is more information about the benefits and the things that you value and that matter to you as an employee of Morrisville. This is related to some of those benefit options, affordable housing, for example, that we talked about. So Lori, you want to give a quick update on the parental leave?
Yes, real quick. So just a little quick background, paid parental leave, to qualify for that, you need to qualify under family medical leave. So same requirements. It is related to birth, adoption, and guardianship of children. You get up to 12 weeks under FMLA for birth and bonding time. Six weeks of that can fall under our paid parental leave benefit, so it's not in addition to the 12, but as part of the 12. The town gives the employee up to six weeks of sick leave, so they don't have to use their own sick leave during that time. So that's just generally how that works and what that is. We're in our third year of that benefit, and we have had, the first year, we had four employees take advantage of that. In FY19, we had five. In '20, we're on track for five, and there's two we know of that will probably, you know, babies come when they come, but we think they'll be in this fiscal year. So about seven-ish for this year is where we are with it.
And that's a good retention tool. I mean, that's a good benefit for them, right?
Yes.
I think it has been appreciated. I do think it's been something that's been appreciated, so. All right, so, ma'am?
Can I ask two questions real quick? So the high-cost deductible, you have... That's a third option you're going to offer.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, good. I'm glad to hear that. And then the other thing, too, are we following the HB 520, the firefighters' cancer act? Okay, so it passed the House, and it will most likely pass the Senate in this session, so...
Wasn't it made a study bill?
I don't... Am I asking somebody to follow that?
My awareness is, is they referred it to a study committee.
Okay.
That is a request by firefighters to give them... Oh, you're talking about cancer. I'm talking about the retirement bill.
No, I'm talking about cancer. It is a bill that actually gives...
Takes an attorney to prove that cancer was...
Yeah, I apologize. I turned left on you.
So it is where we will have to cover them for their cancer, and they do not have to prove it was actually work-related. So the only reason I bring it up, because this is pretty, this could be pretty substantial. And there's a, there's another cancer insurance product that I know they are trying to talk to the General Assembly about that would actually be less of a burden, like a fifth of the cost on us, on municipalities, versus this just firefighter cancer act. So it's HB 520. I think we need to follow this one very closely because it may affect our budget this year. And if there's some... I know the league is trying to work with the General Assembly to find a better solution than what is proposed in HB 520. Same solution, but would be for us, you know, financially much more agreeable, doable, whatever, so.
Okay. All right, just a quick, this is just a list of our position vacancies, sort of, as of right now. You know, again, we have 18 positions vacant, and half of them are public safety. Police, more affected by retirements, a very extensive and robust and huge, huge competitiveness. One of the things that you will see come through the budget process is the Triangle J Sandbox Initiative, which actually Brandon started when he was in Garner. It is a collaboration of all municipalities, or not all, many municipalities collaborating on a recruiting mechanism, so a field of applicants is shared with all of the municipalities. There's just some cost to that, very nominal cost, but it's another recruitment effort related specifically to police officers that we're employing. And the firefighters, both police and fires sort of do ongoing recruitment. Those positions are really always open. Firefighters have just recently gone through agility, so they're in process. Two in planning, one is Michelle's old position, and then John Bernard retired. The code enforcement officer is posted, and Michelle is getting her sea legs under her for filling her position. Will is already in recruitment for PIO. The engineering department is in review. Really, Jim Meyer got promoted, so it's the vacant position there. Nancy is looking for the purchasing and contract manager, and I think is near to an offer. Brian in Parks and Rec left very recently, so that job is going up for posting probably this week, and a street maintenance tech officer offer is pending. There'll be more because we do have some positions that were approved January 1st that are in process, and we will be ramping back up again for MAFC to fill those positions. So that's just information on what our vacancies are. And then the last thing you have before I'll make my ask is just, we have had our pre-budget meetings with all of the departments just a couple weeks ago. Part of that process is just a first glimpse of what they might be requesting in their budget. There's no vetting at this point. There's no commitment. I am not telling you that this is what will be proposed. There's lots of good candid discussion about what would be looked at, but you've asked for it before, so I am showing you what has been discussed in those pre-budget meetings. But this is not a budget ask at this point, but you can see, in talking to the mayor earlier today, you know, I had mentioned that police had not requested... She's evaluating that, and I think that's what happens at this time of year in the budget process. And a lot of that is also related to what's going on. And I think, for example, our recent conversation about a traffic accident report and perimeter and recrimination may have accelerated her feel that she needs to make these kinds of requests. So I'm not really going to talk about any of these. I mean, this is just early, but as you can see, the cost is significant. This is ongoing cost that we have to take into account at a budget consideration. And what I've also tried to demonstrate is, it's not just this year. There's more to come so that we... And this is part of our balancing of the budget process, just so that you can see what might be coming your way as a part of the budget proposal discussion. Any last questions I can answer?
So I would just say, I... Now, the other side of the equation is how we're going to pay for all this. So we need to understand where, how that all fits in. So when are we going to have that conversation?
Well, that is part of your budget process. You have a lengthy meeting tomorrow about our mid-year budget report and how we're preparing for the budget. This is capacity discussion as we look at all of the things associated with our budget and making sure that there's the capacity for the resources that we need.
You say capacity, you mean staff capacity, ability to do...
All capacity. Because, you know, some of these positions need vehicles. And there's, you know, we started compiling, you know, a spreadsheet of requests, and remember, there were $12 million of requests last year. So you have to put that into a much smaller hole to... That's why that, there is inherent balancing to the budget process.
This is 2.25 million without any kind of operational attachment that comes along.
Thank you very much for sharing all that.
My request is for the adjustments this year now.
That's outside of my 2.2... That's outside of my 2.25 million.
Yeah, I would be asking for...
The one you're talking about that can be covered with lapse salary.
Correct. But it is accurate in why I tried to put it in. It would be double that for fiscal year 21 budget.
So you want that okay now?
I would love that okay now, but...
It's a work session.
Yeah, I know. We usually don't make decisions at a work session.
Essentially, this is a commitment for FY21. Essentially, this is a commitment for FY '21 for the 783,000 increase in salary. Total compensation, I think.
The adjustment.
And that's to continue to build capacity.
And I understand if you don't wanna make that decision now.
Maybe 3,000 for five years, right? I mean, it's the slide that has this total 766,000.
Yeah, so if we adjusted for half a year this year, you'd have a full year impact next year.
So can I just finish, finish my thoughts for a minute? Just making the commitment now, we're making the commitment for next year. So you're not gonna just do it for this year and then not do it in the budget.
For the job classification study, that would be correct.
I think we have to have a, I would feel more comfortable understanding how this all is gonna add up. And I, I don't see that tonight. So I'm not gonna say it's not gonna add up, but I, I feel more comfortable seeing the other side of the ledger.
Meaning the revenue?
The revenue streams, right.
Well, there, we, there are lots of asks that are gonna come in this budget.
Right.
And, and, and that's fine. I, I, that's what we, we should be hearing all this. And I wanna make sure that we're not committing this ask and then we're sorry next month when we talk about something else. I'd like to, I'd like to consider this all together. Because I'm, I don't wanna make a commitment now for this year and then during the budget process, you all say, oh, never mind, we don't like this pay plan classification. We don't like, we don't wanna do this. You can't do that. It's all, you're all in or you're not.
Right, but I mean, which I totally agree that we have to look at everything holistically. I don't think, as a matter of fact, that we should make a decision tonight. But I, I also, I mean, I think that there's gonna be a ton of asks in the budget, but if we can't keep our people because they keep getting poached, you know, I mean, that's, that's a critical, to me, that's in the critical path. Like, we have to, we have to be prepared to equip Martha's town manager page to keep these people. Like, like, I mean, I'm saying, I totally agree with you. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make a decision tonight either. But I, I'm just saying that in my opinion, that it's, that this is really important. I'm glad to share all this.
I agree with you. I've always said that our people are our greatest asset and to retain and recruit is critical. I, I'm just saying, I'd like to look, we're saying the same thing. I'll look at the whole picture. And you've talked about doing this retroactively, retroactively anyhow, right Martha?
Yes, but the, the study's over and I would, employees are probably waiting. They knew it was in the budget message last year. No promises have been made. You know, part of our job is, if this is the priority, it goes in the budget and we balance with this in the budget. It, it would influence other things potentially, including things that you're gonna be talking about. What is our tax rate?
Right.
You build capacity, you keep the same capacity, or you take away capacity. All of those options are on the table. So, so this ask of the employees for next year is a little more than a penny for your employees.
Yeah. I, I agree with, I agree with looking at it further, but I'm leaning towards accepting Martha's ask just because I believe that she doesn't ask for things where often she needs. But in this case, I believe that because she's asking us, I mean, I wanna look at it further just in case there's something else, but that's just where I'm leaning, so.
So I think there's several asks and maybe accepting all of them is not appropriate at this time. But the one that is the burning issue is the retention for our existing staff, to me. And I've seen a lot of turnover in the last several years. I, I completely agree with you that our Wake County municipalities keep grabbing, I keep seeing people in different towns. And we need to keep our talent here. The ask about the future positions, I think that is totally appropriate to have that discussion again and again. And we don't have to make that decision tonight because we wanna see how the whole of the staffing picture and the assets look based on revenue options with the bond and the tax rate and so forth. But I'm willing to support the ask about the market adjustments piece because I think that is where we have, as Councilmember Robotti said, the critical path. We have to keep our staff and then we have to look at the future as well.
That's the 579 and the 2% and the 2...
No, it's just the flat 2, the 2.5 and the 5. So the merit adjustment...
It's the rate adjustment.
What is it? I have that written down.
So could that, could that work for you to take the merit at this point to get that?
So, and I, so, so one true thing, the work session is not a, it has not been a decision-making meeting. And I understand that, you know, if you were gonna say, go for it, heck, I was gonna be happy. But we have a budget workshop really tomorrow too. Some of this is important for us to build the budget for you, to put these things in or not. The, the merit is, is just a calculation that can come back as a part of the budget. It, it is really the job classification recommendations that, that I, I do feel pretty strongly about that if, if we could, I, I wanna know what else you need from me in order to make the decision. I hear what you're saying, Councilmember Johnson, but that's not gonna be fully together till May, when I present a budget to you, the whole picture.
And none of that stuff comes, nothing that you're talking about with the merit increases in the classification, that's not, none of that comes with like cars or additional CapEx costs.
The merit is not...
That's all, all that stuff is new.
And, and I'm not asking about future position requests now. That was information, I, I, I just wouldn't have felt it was right to make this kind of ask and not tell you...
What might be coming.
Yes. So that was really the purpose behind that was, oh, by the way, here this is. That would not have been a good idea.
I get it. I almost prefer you hadn't told me you want 18 people at 1.5 million dollars plus.
I didn't tell you I wanted 18 people.
No, you actually didn't. You're right. You actually did not.
She was very careful about saying preliminary. I'm aware, Fender would like to add some thoughts.
We have a lot of things that we wanna do, but I think unless we have the staff that's committed and a body of knowledge that's here for a long time, I think that's the key, right? I mean, if you look at, you know, other jurisdictions like Cary, for example, just, you know, they've got, they've had a lot of, a lot of long-standing council members for 15, 20 years, 12, 15 years. A lot of institutional knowledge, the council does keep shifting every few years. And then also the staff is there for a long time. And I think that kind of institutional knowledge helps us do more. So I, I look at it saying, Martha's the captain of the, of the plane. I mean, in terms of, we're providing her guidance and the resources, but if we don't give her that initially of what she's asking, that's what I'm afraid of, is that the constant shift in turnover is just gonna make it harder for her to do the things that she needs to do. And we're just going to lose a bit of direction and focus.
Thank you, Steve. It's Mayor Fender.
Well, I'm wondering if one avenue would be to, if we were to move forward with the market adjustment, we would still, we, like, move forward with that almost immediately. I would think we still have another lever to adjust if, if for whatever reason we determine, oh, it's too much. We could, we would have one lever adjustment instead of this 10, 13, 15.
25, 20.
Instead of this 3, 5, 7, you could pull it back to 2, 4, 6.
Correct, and, and...
It's part of the budget discussion generally.
Yes. And that is influenced by what it, the, the base that it's calculated on. So, so having some direction allows us to be more accurate for you on other levels of the, the budget balancing process.
But you said that 1% would really be statistically significant in the overall budget anyway.
The, the, the mark, the, the job classification study recommendations for a full year implementation are roughly 5% of our total full-time base salaries.
And they'll be ongoing. The change will continue and be compounded to a certain extent with merit. But to echo what I've heard from many is, our employees are our most important asset and retaining them and keeping the institutional knowledge and growing our capacity to do good work. We're not gonna be able to do the projects that we need to do without the people to do it. In good to great, they say you can only grow as quickly as your good employees. So we have great employees, we have to keep them, we have to get more. And I see this as the path. So I'm ready to commit to the 383 now and the 766 for upcoming years. I understand that some people might be not quite as comfortable with that, but I hope that we're, maybe we can think about it tonight, come back tomorrow.
So mayor, I wanna be so bold as to kind of introduce a motion. And, and there's a lot of pages, but it's simply this. To accept the fiscal year 2020 job study recommendations. That is not forever. It is only those recommendations.
But it is for...
I would say that those would have to carry forward. That's the next page.
Right.
That informs the next page.
That's with existing staff. It is not with future staff. I think it's important that we have that discussion about future staff separately.
So can I, can...
This is a recommendation for existing staff to do the salary adjustment.
Before we go too far down the road, I think it would be really, we typically don't make motions and we set, we give direction. I'm good with giving direction tonight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put my angst somewhere else tonight, but I'm gonna say that in a minute. But I would rather give them direction for them to come back and it be an item that would be on an agenda that we could adopt or something versus...
How about then I make a motion that we get a briefing item on this?
However, however they can do it and get it on an agenda, we can vote on it. I think I would, I'd be much more comfortable with, yeah, whether it's a brief, it'd have to be a briefing item, I guess. You're right, you're right.
Well, you said that for this, for this year, it doesn't require any budget adjustment, right?
I wouldn't need to request additional budget appropriations for fiscal year 20.
So then what's the procedure by which we could approve this?
So this, this is a significant, unusual ask. You know, we, we usually set this kind of stuff once a year. It's big, it's significant. It, it's why I don't, didn't feel I would have the authority nor would I want to do this without council endorsing it. How you do that is, I think, what you're talking about in a briefing where there's a formal action by council is something that is easy to do. It gives count, the, the obvious time we could do that is, is March 10th. You've got a meeting tomorrow, so it's not gonna be ready unless you, unless you want me to bring an add-on item tomorrow, which we'd have to work on all day. And I would.
It's that important.
But March 10th, you could brief and adopt on the same day. If it's retroactive, it's retroactive anyways. It's just when we do that.
I mean, the issue is we can't give them a raise and then take it back.
No, absolutely.
Or you wouldn't want to.
Yeah, I, 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 I do, I, I mean, clearly I think our employees should have this, need it, want it. It's the right thing to do. That, that is my, but don't give it for this year and not be prepared to. That would be worse than anything. So you do have to, you're, you're making a future year budget decision as well.
So can I restate my angst? So my, my real concern is not with taking care of our current employees. My real concern is with the 18 positions and how we're gonna afford all that. I guess I put my, I put my heartburn on, on this when this is really not the, my heartburn is really on how we're gonna do the 18 new posi, I have no problem taking care of our employees.
And, and, and so, so that was, you know, I, again, I am not telling you that...
I appreciate you saying that like three times now.
And, you know, I've been asked these questions the last two years. And so I gave it all to you now. You know, the, the, the next challenge would be, well, why didn't you ask for this one? Because you put it on this list. But I, I, I gave you what was in a hopper. But we, we don't have submitted budget requests yet. We had preliminary meetings about what department heads were thinking about. Not just staff, by the way, all the other stuff.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I'm good, by the way. I'm good.
So could we have a briefing on March 11 then? Is that what we want?
It sounds like we're close enough to be able to say that this council is ready to move forward and we don't need to see this again because there won't really be any new information then.
But we have to scope it and we have to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, there's a...
I think March 11 is good.
There's a...
You know, it's pretty clear.
I don't see us not doing it.
My, my thing is...
Okay, we haven't heard from Councilmember Garamella. Let's hear your thoughts.
For me, you know, it's not about like what Les said, it's about that money. It's like, you know, 6% and chip. And then your, and your RC are increasing those ones. So we didn't get a dollar amount of any of those. And so those are the things that I am looking for, to have holistic view of not this, I feel this is like more of a piecemealing, you know, like approach. I need a full approach of the entire HR, how do you handle it?
The total compensation?
The total, like, you know, for your department of HR and like payrolls and everything, how do we put it aside?
So you do have that. It's in that other costs of, it's, it's not broken down.
26%, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So it's, it's sort of accounted for. These are all estimates because we haven't applied them to salaries anyways, you know, at eight point in time. But it's relatively accurate. But we have accounted for the fact that there are other costs once you adjust a salary.
She's gonna be presenting us a balanced budget. This will be part of it. She's just looking to get it in front of us early so that she can address it. It'll help recruiting, it will help retention over the next few months. It'll set a good stage for the budget going forward. Last year, I believe we added 12 positions and we were able to do that within a balanced budget. We didn't really have to change, we didn't have to trade off a lot of things to do that. I feel that this upcoming budget, we will have more positions and we'll continue to build capacity. And we'll be in a better position to retain more of our employees, which is a real challenge, not just in public safety, but across the board, as is obvious. So it sounds like for the comfort level of the council, I think it should be a brief first meeting in March. I'm not gonna be there. Mayor Pretend Johnson will be presiding that meeting. And are we all comfortable with that?
Well, how quickly could you get this for us tomorrow night? Is that impossible?
That way we can all vote. So we'll do it.
You got most of it, you're on here.
Okay, so, and they'll be a little bit more transparent for their residents? Is that why?
I think very much transparent. I think typically we give a heads up before we vote on things, so.
Is there, is there anything else? I, I heard what Councilmember Garamella said, that, that I can try to make that more clear that those other compensation costs are incorporated.
Would you mind breaking out that 26%? I think that would help us all.
Yeah, I meant to say 26 is not actually the real thing because if you look at the 6% and chip increase, that is for the entire employees. All right, so it's a different amount, you know? So when you're talking about the GRC, that's the entire.
But that's not relevant to this?
No, but it is because I'm looking at not just this particular 766.
You're just saying employee costs.
Employee costs, that's where I'm looking. So that we are done, let's look at town other projects. So those, that's what I'm, I'm putting myself into.
You wanna bucket it?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Is that reasonable? Can that be done? We just gave you tomorrow's workload.
Yeah, so I think my, my, my challenge will be getting it to you before the meeting.
We've already discussed it tonight. I'm okay with you sharing it as long as you walk us through it.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll brief it.
We don't need to see it before.
We'll brief it.
Is it possible to publish it at all before the meeting so the public can see?
I think the public won't even know. Public won't even know.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay, as long as it's out there for the public during the meeting, I think that's helpful.
Will there be time for there to be public comment on it, or is this something we have public comment on? I'm still kind of
That's a budget portal, isn't it?
Okay.
Well, they could, they could speak at public comments.
Anytime.
Yeah, and they can speak on any topic at public comments.
So this won't be on the consent agenda?
No.
Just to be clear.
No consent. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Good on that?
Do you want to take a five-minute break?
It's been another hour and a half, let me take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 9:37. Is that good with everybody?
Is there more?
Yeah.
We haven't even started the roundtable.
We're going to have some time with it or something.
How much time are we going to go over this?
Yeah, we got a time box, so
So it's nine minutes each? Coming back into session. If I could make a suggestion, we have some fairly quick and easy staff updates, and then we have some things that we're expecting to talk about, RDU reports, citizen recognition, and then at that point, when we take a look and see how much time we want to time box at that point.
Should we really need to talk about the RDU airport?
We don't need to talk about the RDU thing right now.
Yeah.
No, we don't. So, you can take that one right off. But if we could just pass it to staff to start off, to talk about attendance exception per committees and citizen committee balloting.
So can I perhaps go back to RDU? I received an email this morning that is asking how, if, or when they could come back in front of council.
Yeah, we'd like to meet them.
We'd like to see them.
So.
So, I, I was able to get a call with their board chair, John Kane, to try to get a feel for what it is they're looking for. He told me in certain terms that the quarry is happening, but they're investing the 286 compromise.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't even understand what that is. Can you explain that?
Okay.
Stop using bingo.
I didn't even hear what you said.
Okay. The, I believe there was some interest in this council, some council members to ask about the RDU quarry contract to Wakestone. So, it's my understanding that maybe part of the reason that they weren't going to be bringing their leadership is because they didn't want to discuss that, they just wanted to talk about our land use plan, and how that might affect airport operations. So, we were looking to maybe co-mingle that a little bit, and have more of a back-and-forth discussion. They just want to give us information about what they want. During this whole land use plan process, they've had that opportunity, but now they want to give us some really technical info. So, we've been having some discussions about maybe they just give us that technical info, or maybe have it go through the Planning and Zoning Board, and then we'll get a look at it then, rather than having them send over some of their technical planners. But it's up to us, if we want to just talk to them directly or let them present to us, that's town council time that I think is pretty valuable, that I don't think we need to go down that route right now. But it's up to the will of the council of what we're looking for from them, and how we want to interact with them.
I, I think them just sharing what their position is, is not enough. I think we should share with them our concerns about our town, and how the airport overlay affects how our land use is. And I need to have an opportunity to ask questions directly, and they need an opportunity to hear us directly. I don't like the fact that they told us we can't ask certain questions. We can let them know that we don't want them to ask certain questions of us. It needs to be a focused discussion, but yet if something is related and it comes up, we should have an opportunity to ask that. I think that, you know, it's misrepresenting everything if we have taboo subjects.
They were happy to receive our questions in advance, to be prepared to answer them.
That's not
I'm just saying that's what their email said.
I'm literally not going to participate in the meeting anymore, I can't ask them about the quarry, I'm sorry. I'm just not going to do it. And plus, I think that if we agree to that, it's going to go up to the public, like we have the RDU people here, we're not asking about a quarry that they ask us about all the time.
I mean, they can't dictate to us what we're allowed to ask from.
So there's
Like, like they're, well.
We, we can have an intent to discuss the town matters, yes, but if there's related matters, we should have some options. Now, what format and what forum is to be discussed, but I really think that talking about the airport overlay and what we can and cannot do is very germane to our land use plan, and we should have a dialogue.
Exactly. So there could be a path forward, that they give that technical, technical information, we receive it, we don't need to do that in a council meeting, and we'll have those concerns and their thoughts.
I would, no, I don't want, I want to have a conversation with them, I want to ask follow-up questions. I don't want just a briefing from them in an email.
Well, the land use plan is a long process.
I, don't, don't debate me, TJ, I'm putting my, this is what I want.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from the other council members.
So, so I understand, so they're willing to come now to talk about the noise overlay and have that discussion?
With Ellis Caton, the planning person.
Okay, but that would be a back-and-forth discussion? That would be a
Are we allowed to ask them him questions?
So, so I will tell, so there's two things going on here. There's the, the land use plan that we do, I, I agree, I think there needs to be some robust discussion there, and we should have the opportunity to ask clarifying questions, so we understand, I mean, the land use plan and the decisions we make in the land use plan are pretty darn significant, and I want to understand their position. I, maybe I'll agree with them, maybe I won't, maybe I'll be somewhere in the middle, but I need to be able to ask them and have a dialogue on that, back and forth. I think that is critically important as we go through the land use plan conversation. And now we have the RDU issue too, and I realize that, that is, that is another issue that, and, and you want to be able to ask them, I get it, and they don't want to talk about it. Or, or they don't want to send the right people here to talk about it. You know, maybe that's a separate conversation that we work on, but I think, I think that we need to talk about the land use plan issue too. I think that's pretty important. So, again, I'm going to ask to clarify, are they willing to come and talk about that with a presentation, and, and have us ask about the, how it affects the land use plan and our decision-making? Is that still a possibility, a back-and-forth conversation?
So my email I got references present to council twice, nothing about dialogue. It's something that I can, again, ask for clarification on, for you to make this decision. If there would be dialogue on this issue.
They would also be willing to host us, so it doesn't have to necessarily be here.
So, bottom line, what I'm understanding is, they want, they don't want to co-mingle both issues, so they want to have this issue, and then the RDU query issued separately. Is that, or are they even concerned to have that discussion separately, or not even have a discussion?
I got the impression, what, what I read is that their staff is going forward with the quarry. When I spoke to John Kane, he said it's a binding contract that they've entered, that the quarry is happening. So there's no real reason to discuss it, but he's happy, he said that I could share his cell phone number with any of you, if you'd like to speak to him on that subject.
How about that? But he's on the board, right?
He's the chairman of that board. He's been on the board for like seven years.
So, so what we're talking about here is a board member who's kind of like us, who's making the decisions, and then we have a staff person who's going to come and just give information about their position on the land use plan, but it's, he's a staff person, so he's not going to
He'll be informational, but not really policy.
Right, he can, because he's a staff person. So he's here to give us details on that, on the land use plan, and how the airport fits into that, or doesn't, or whatever. But he's not going to talk about policy, because that's not his role.
But one thing I was able to do during the call is I told Mr. Kane that we're very interested in knowing what our decisions, how that will affect airport operations. So if there's something that they will be unable to do, depending on our land use decisions, that's the kind of information that we would find helpful. And that's, I tried to make that, so that's, I think, the technical information they're going to be bringing to us on that subject. It's interesting, because we're trying to influence their decision on their land, they're trying to influence our decision on our land. So it's interesting.
Which is why we need a dialogue.
The only one to have one half of that conversation.
Yeah, but, but that's two different things. I want to make sure is, when, when the consultant came and talked to us, I very straight asked him, who has more authority on, you know, the overlay? And he said, you guys, you know, which is the
That's us.
House. So, so like, they can come and tell whatever they want to do, but if it is affecting our economic development around that area, like the McRamon, and they are forcing us to backtrack, I, I'll listen to my consultant and, you know, them, because what is their interest in us?
Liz, do you think the staff person is the person that you would want to be asking your questions to?
So what I
For that, for that topic?
So what I would want to, I want to know what their plans are, how, how the, because they're planning on doing another runway, what they predict and project for their, their usage, because it's going up. But I would like to have that discussion back and forth. Yeah, where is that, how, how is that going to affect us as they fly over Morrisville? And then, even to the point, I'd like to know technology, is the technology getting better or worse, and, or is the volume going to just wipe out, and I don't know the answers to any of these questions, or is the techno, the volume going to erase any technology advances and sound attenuation? I'd like to ha, and I don't, if they present it all fabulous, but I want to be able to clarify if they don't.
Well, is that staff person the appropriate person that would be able to answer those type of questions?
If you provide them in advance, and that's what they're asking.
Technically, yes. Technical knowledge, yes, he will have the technical knowledge to say what the impact is, but as policy, he says that's what I've been told to, from what my message from RDU to you guys.
You know, and some of this stuff you can get. We, they've, they've done reports, they've done their, their vision planning, but I want to make sure that we all are on the same, we all hear the same information, and if they're, if it's changed at all, we get that current information from them. I really would like to have that, but
That's, I agree. Martha, what's your take? Because we are doing this whole land use plan, and we have almost spent a year of time into it, they didn't show up or say anything, and when we are ready to add somewhere around it, they're coming and talking there.
So Mr. Caton has been a part of the technical advisory or technical committee in the land use plan. We were very purposeful at including an RDU representative. It is my understanding, I have not attended these meetings directly, that, that he has been asked about this, and I think, as you've acknowledged, these are our decisions to make. The airport is like any other constituency that wants to influence your decisions, so a citizen or them. And so there's been multiple ways to do that. The recommendations still concern them, so they're looking for this specific contact.
I would suggest maybe letting them present to the Planning and Zoning Board, and then all, we can attend that meeting if we wish, hear everything, and we can ask them to come back again if the answers aren't to our liking. I mean, we're trying to preserve our town council time, which is so limited. If they're going to give an hour presentation, that's an hour that we're not doing the other work of the town.
This is the work of the town. This, this is our big neighbor. I am willing to sit an hour and listen and have dialogue. I, I'm sorry, TJ, this is so important.
This is a big issue, but when are they, when are they presenting to the Planning and Zoning?
So that that was not their request. I think what the mayor's saying is, your land use plan is still going to come through your Planning and Zoning Board, and there's still community engagement opportunities that are going to come as those recommendations come back.
It sounds like the majority of us want to sit down with them and have that conversation.
That's fine, that's the will of the council. Do you want to have it at a town council meeting? You want them to host us there, which they might be a little bit more open with their statements and things? How do you guys want to do that?
So, I think they should come here and present, so we can have a discussion about the land use plan and the noise overlay.
Publicly. Because that's part of transparent government.
Right, it's still here.
So I'd suggest I'll follow back up and ensure it's going to be a dialogue of Q and A with people that can answer the questions, because then it becomes a scheduling thing that we'll have to address as well. But I can get that clarification perhaps before tomorrow.
I think great.
If that's the, that's the specific question I'm hearing, is it, is it a presentation, one-sided, or is there dialogue at least about that issue?
I don't mind if they do a presentation, that might be helpful. I mean, I'd like to hear what they have to say, quite frankly.
And, right, the, the assumptions behind what they're asking.
Right, right. It affects a huge part of our town, a huge part of our town.
Yeah. Almost, yeah.
That's one we weren't going to talk about.
Can you, can you do the Wake Board of Commissioners thing, just real quick? That should be quick.
So, we had to cancel because of weather. Wake Commissioners have indicated that they can come on March 16th, which is a Monday, or Thursday, the 26th of March. So if you guys could check your calendars and see which one of those two would work better, if that's something we can knock out, we can let them know and get that on everyone's schedule.
Say those dates one more time.
Monday, the 16th of March, or Thursday, the 26th of March.
I can do either one.
And I think we do the same time, 6:00 to 7:30.
I'm good.
Either one.
Everybody good with either one?
I think the 26th would give you more time for publicity.
There was a point made that we do have a meeting
Three meetings.
Two meetings, on Monday, the 23rd, and Tuesday, the 24th. That's our work session and our regular meeting. So that's three meetings a week, which is a lot.
Okay.
It's Tuesday, the 16th.
I won't be here.
People feeling okay on the 16th?
I won't be here.
16th.
That's okay, I mean, I'm not presenting or asking questions, it's simply a, I don't need to be there.
Does she look angstful?
I, my office down.
Okay. Everyone else okay with either?
16th.
I'm fine.
Vicky's had it on the 16th, I'm on it on the 26th. If those are considerations.
16th is fine.
I'll find out both days. Okay.
I'm just curious as to, I mean, it's something we could talk about later, but how it was decided that two of those commissioners were being invited, because nobody else in the council had a say of?
Their chair, vice chair.
Yeah, but, but
I ideally, it was going to be Vicky and Jessica, I mean Commissioners Holmes and Adamson, because they're our people. Ms. Holmes was unable, and Chair Ford was willing, so that's how we got there.
Okay, because I mean, I just feel like some of the other commissioners have worked with Morrisville for a longer period of time on different issues, and I think other council members might have wanted to weigh in on Kane, or we could have just invited them all. Just don't want to, you know, I don't, it's just a conversation another time, but
Yeah, okay.
I would, I would have done it that way.
I'm not sure how to move forward to 16th or 26th.
I'm like, go with 16th, right? Like, although she's not there, you don't need all seven councils to be here, so go with the best dates available and move on.
Focus on 16th.
Just do the 16th.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus for the 16th.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. Attendance exception for committees, are you ready to do that one?
That's Eric.
I thought you had only one item you can do it, like you have one.
Well, this is Eric.
You should have made that rule.
Yeah.
He's doing an exception to the exception.
I don't know.
Almost there. Martha, do you need one? Lay down.
All right, council previously requested that staff research
All right. Um, council previously requested that staff research and develop an attendance exception policy for the town of Morrisville Board and Committees. Staff did develop an exception request process that we felt could be implemented through an addendum to the Appointed Public Bodies Administrative Policy within Section 7, which is related to attendance. And I, I do have the attendance policy, um, the Appointed Public Bodies Body's policy on the big screen, just in case you were wondering where this addendum would take place. The addendum reads that an attendance exception request form, and that form is on the last page of, um, your packet, must be submitted to the town clerk within seven days of an attendance-based dismissal. The town clerk will present the attendance exception request packet to town council within two weeks of form submission. The attendance exception request packet will include the attendance exception request form, which, as I said, is the last, um, form on your packet. The members' original application for appointment, dates of all member absences since their most recent appointment, and a member appointment history. Council may consider the following criteria to evaluate a member for reinstatement. Their years of service to the town of Morrisville, the reason for the member absence, whether it be work or illness-related, the board or committee chair and/or department head recommendation, and other member volunteer participation within the town of Morrisville. At their discretion, council may also use additional criteria to evaluate a member for reinstatement. Members can be reinstated with additional allotted absences at council discretion. If approved by council, the member will be reinstated to serve the remainder of their current appointment term. A copy of the attendance exception request form will be found at the end of the document at, as, um, Appendix A. So it'll be listed at the, um, end of this document also. That will be easily accessible by any members as they receive this, um, entire document upon their appointment. Um, as we move to the second page, uh, the next steps in the process, I need, um, some direction from council regarding two questions. The direction would cover how does council want to review and consider the items? Um, there's two clarifying questions listed on the second page. The first question would be how does council want staff to present the exception request? Option A, the request can be presented at a regular meeting. It'll be finalized through a vote with the resolution, and the member will then be reinstated via notice by the town clerk. Or option B, a work session discussion could take place, finalized with council consensus regarding reinstatement, and then the member will then be reinstated by the town clerk. So that's the first, um, question that I have of council is how they would like the item to be presented to them.
And the work sessions are generally every month, except there's some months where it's two months?
Well, I apologize. It will be added as a work session on, onto a regular meeting.
Okay, so.
It wouldn't be, um, yeah, exactly. It wouldn't necessarily be a work session meeting, but it would be added onto a regular meeting as a work session item.
That's good clarification. So the timeliness would probably be within a month, so they wouldn't miss the next meeting if reinstated.
Can we back up? I'm not even sure I want to do it this way. I, isn't, didn't this come, remind me, this came out of the Rob Kent?
One time.
Right.
Council asked for staff to put together some criteria that they could use to evaluate requests if they come forward.
This is too loose a criteria. This, this needs to be a very unique and exceptional request. Rob Kent's was a very unique and exceptional request, request. To, to just give members the opportunity to request because they have a work conflict? I, I, I have a hard time with that.
I think the.
Did, I, we need to.
I think it needs to be general enough that we can do it. He gives us some criteria to evaluate. I understand what you're saying. That, that was a very special case.
This is what this would say to me. Oh, I, I fly all the time to Dallas. I fly and I'm going to miss, and so I'm just going to keep requesting because I fly to Dallas all the time.
And it's on us to say, no, actually, that's not a valid enough.
I don't even want them coming to me. Talk about, talk about time.
I think staff's struggle is, is we don't know what you, we don't know what you want. So we came up with what we could come up with. It is your standard. We don't know what that is.
And, and I, you know, and I'll be the first one to tell you, it's always easier to react to something than to create it. So I just think it needs more me, quite frankly. That's just my two cents.
I'm looking at it a different way, like, you know.
No, it's not.
Can we listen to, uh, Councilmember Johnson, then if you want to put your thing up, you can go next.
I don't see.
Sorry. I jumped into.
It's ten o'clock.
A couple of things. Um, with the language, it stated that, um, the administration of the dismissal, there could be a window of time when the applicant can request within seven days. So it's unclear to me if, if I miss the Park and Recs Committee meeting on a Wednesday, if I haven't told the next Wednesday, and that's my third absence or whatever, to request the reinstatement? Or does, you know, I could be dismissed within a few weeks of that based on who's monitoring? It's unclear what the trigger is. I mean dismissal could be an arbitrary thing, and then I only have seven days. What if I'm on vacation? What if I'm out of the country? I only have seven days.
Well, I, I believe in this sense, the dismissal is triggered by a formal notification from the support staff member and from the town clerk. So when that member makes that.
This, but you're doing a time-based dismissal. It's unclear to me how, um, that dismissal trigger is. If I miss my third meeting, do you usually process that within seven days? And then they get seven days? I, I don't need you to answer. I just, you know, it's unclear how that process works to the average person, meaning anybody in one of these committees kind of thing. And the committees meet at different times. Some are monthly, some are quarterly, some are, you know, like, I mean, this could be quite a thrill. Now, um, how many committee members per year are dismissed through your dismissal program? So that'll give us an understanding of the potential volume of this request process. I think that's essential for us to understand. Also, if, if the council does follow whatever, um, does the clock reset for that committee member completely? Do they get another three? Do they get another two? You know, that, that was, um.
That, that information is a part of the council. Can either reappoint to their original term with no more allotted absences, or they can, um, they can decide to allow up to three or up to four more allotted absences after that discretion. But that, um, does appear on the term also if they decide to do that.
And I appreciate that. This, this becomes an administrative challenge, and it should be an exception for a reason.
Extraordinary exception.
I'd be really happy to understand what the volume of our attrition rate is with the, the committee.
We can bring that information back for you.
There you go.
Okay.
Councilmember Karen.
For, for me, it's like, people do take absence, you know, and, uh, it is, it's at six o'clock. Traffic is, as many, many a times I've seen people come late there around six thirty, when a meeting starts at six o'clock. Work, it's a volatile world out there. You know, we talk about the staff here, you know, think about the corporate world. If you are pulled in to go somewhere, you have to go. And, and these are all voluntary. These are, you know, they're coming. We, we, we can't ding them for something. At least, I would say, we have attendance policy of, say, three that you can miss. And then have this exception of two, like, they could use more for illness or, you know, work kind of a thing. And then cap it at that, that kind of a thing, but give the flexibility. It's, uh, and ask the chairs if they can run their meetings. If they're not getting a quorum, then it just does not make any sense. It doesn't have to, uh, they have to be able to run their meetings and do their stuff. And the business has to go on, but at the same time, these are, many of these are all voluntary, and they come with a passion, but at the same time, they have no control. If they have a sick kid in the house and they had to stay back.
Do you have a suggestion to make this better, or make it go away?
It's like, uh, add, add like, uh, two more, um, absences if it is only related to, like, out of, you know, basically working out somewhere or illness. Add to that so that they can accommodate. If, if the person is not doing, out of 12 meetings, five, then it's pretty much missing 50% of the entire meeting. It's not worth his time and worth our time. But at least give that flexibility, you know?
I think three is pretty flexible, in my opinion.
Uh, we, we can set our standards, but, you know, it depends on, you know, how people take it.
And it varies on committee. Some committees don't meet every month.
Yeah.
Ms. Hudson?
Thank you very much, Mayor. If I may, just to refresh your memory, council amended your Appointed Public Bodies policy, uh, the year and some change ago to make your absence standard even more stringent. Because what was happening is there was so much flexibility allowed that people were pushing that boundary with absences. Our boards and committees were struggling to meet quorum. So particularly for those who do not meet every month, um, they weren't able to really kind of push forward the work of their committee as outlined in their charters and their scope of work. So you all, as a, as an elected body, determined, okay, so we're going to make that a little more stringent. You're going to have to put forth a little more effort. So people are allowed even fewer absences now. Historically, since I've been here in almost five years, we've only had this one exception come up. So as staff, we really, really kind of tried to brainstorm, um, how we might propose something to you. But those exceptional cases, as, as Mayor Pretend Johnson said, really do have to be exceptional. Um, and I, I think the allowance of additional absences in the policy may not be achieving what your ultimate goal is.
Just functioning committees that push the work forward.
I would agree with that.
So can we, um, go ahead and answer these questions and assume that you might be able to tighten these things up a little bit as Mayor Pretend Johnson is requesting, if we feel the need to do that? I, I think it really just comes to us, and I, I like the idea of doing a work session where it's just consensus or as much of a formal vote for these exceptions. That's kind of how we handle the Mr. Kent issue. And I don't think this is going to come up a lot, frankly. If people aren't making to the meetings, I don't think they're going to be working really hard to be able to keep going, to keep not going to meetings, um, essentially.
But, okay, but, okay. I, I still think there needs to be more wording. You know, the public's not sitting here hearing this conversation. All they're going to see is a piece of paper that says, oh, I can do an exception, and I just need to put a reason for my absence, and I'm good to go.
All three absences.
Yeah, well, that's all right. I, I, I think, I think, I think they're, I'm just saying, I would love to see some heavier wording about.
Context.
Yes, this is, it's put your extraordinary reason why you want this, this one this time, that kind of thing.
Well, this isn't for each absence, so this is if you, this is if you've already had three.
If you've been dismissed.
You've been dismissed from the committee.
Right.
And you're presenting the reason why you should be allowed to continue on the committee.
So it should just say reasons for why you think you should be reinstated, considering you've missed three.
There you go.
Well, I think I would want to know why they missed them too.
Yeah.
I think that's why that's in there.
It's, it's, they're not employees to ask, like, why you missed it.
I think that's a basic.
It's, it's, yeah, it's privacy of the person, like, does he have, say, like, I have chemotherapy and that's the reason I missed.
The reason we let Mr. Kent continue was because his, the practices within the Parks and Rec Department.
But that's totally, that exception, we can't even take it here because that's like working both sides of the count, you know? Like, if he misses the meeting, then he's missing, uh, he's, he's attending the thing.
Turn it around instead of saying, why were you so absent? And say, justify why we should reinstate you.
Yeah, I agree.
And that is a strength, saying, I add value because, and then we can evaluate that based on the strength.
I'm good with that. I'd still like to give the, them the opportunity to say why they missed.
They can do that in another way.
Yeah, they can actually do that in answer to that question too, you know? Why should we reinstate you? Because I had a really good reason. I was traveling. My child has been sick, you know?
Okay, so for question one, how do we want to present it? In a briefing item in a meeting or in a work session by consensus?
Is there any reason to go into a work session for it? Like, is there something we could do in a work session that you can, at a meeting or?
It's just more consensus-ish, and it's not a formal vote.
Oh, okay. I guess I'd go with that then.
We generally have a work session at the end of most meetings. So we're just trying to let staff move forward. They're asking us questions.
I think it's good to be on a consent agenda. If they have a briefing with an attachment, we read that, we vote.
Yeah, if you have issues, then pull it out.
We don't need to. Yeah, we pull it out if we have questions, one or two.
So you're going to say, we're going to approve this on consent?
If we have questions, we could pull it out of consent, like every other option. I don't want to be discussing someone's personal business in a public meeting.
Yeah, I, I think that's the right thing to do.
Put it on consent?
Well, no, yeah, well, is it not discuss it or any public?
Yeah, we can consent or not consent, right?
Exactly. And if you have questions, you could always pull any item out of consent to discuss.
And then vote it down.
Yes.
So like, we would, so if, in other words, if someone submitted one of these, and we would say, on the consent agenda, we would put, um, approve the attendance exception request of so-and-so, and we would either approve it or not. And if we don't approve it, then they're still removed. And if we do approve the attendance exception request, then they're reinstated.
Right. So if I had a concern about Ann Robody's, you know, attendance, and she'd been dismissed.
As we all do.
And she submitted something, and she's on the consent agenda, I would say, I'd like to pull the item for Ann Robody's reinstatement, you know, so that we can discuss it. And then we would discuss it, and I would say, you know, she's been absent all the time, you know?
I happen to know she's lying about the reason.
Exactly, exactly. And then we could vote yes or no. But if we kept it on the consent agenda and no one had issue, we would approve it, and it'd be done. But we'd have a document, you know, that we had a vote.
Seems all the more that you're going down the road of, oh, I see a piece of paper that I can fill out and stay on.
No, it's nothing to do with a piece of paper. It has to do with our process.
But why do you think every time the document is there that they will be approved? You're not saying that.
We're not saying.
That's the purpose of a consent agenda. These are items that expect to be approved.
And we can pull them out if we need to have more dialogue.
I, I agree with that process. I mean, we would expect the town council members to have read what's in the consent agenda beforehand.
That's a given.
Yeah. So you, you have the option of not approving it.
What is the issue?
So here, yeah, you might as well try it and let's see how it, it works.
We don't get anything quite.
Yeah, for the two a year we're going to get, let's try it.
They even work or we're going to say, it's not working.
Council consensus, put on a consent agenda. That's option C.
C.
Uh, next question, timeline.
Well, would council, um, want to consider the item and take action the same night of the initial briefing? Or would council want to be briefed on the item and take action on the item at the following town council meeting? But I think we've consented.
Consent agenda. We cut it out, everything's.
You're out of here.
Thank you. Take yours this way. You're going.
So I know we're getting a little punchy. Let's try to get some more work done. Anything else on that?
I know, just for clarification, on the, the form page, you wanted the reason for absence replaced with why do you feel you should be reinstated? Or why you should be reinstated?
Why, yeah. Have them justify why they should be reinstated. That's a positive way of looking at it.
Justify why you should be reinstated.
I would like the word extraordinary or.
Make it extraordinary for.
The next quick and easy staff one, uh, citizen committee balloting.
Oh, my word.
God, more paper?
My favorite.
Staff is, you have, you've overreached your number.
Okay, or what is it?
Okay, I do believe that this one will be relatively quickly for me to move through. If council will recall back to the far recesses of their mind back in fall of 2019, there was a couple of roundtable discussions about early voting, uh, potential sites and locations in Morrisville. Staff was able to provide some information shared by the Wake County Board of Elections about the selection process for voting sites, a list of current and previous voting sites in Morrisville, and a list of early, early voting site criteria that is attached to that packet of information you have in front of you. We were also asked by council at that time to explore some sites in Morrisville for potential early voting. A list of 2020 primary sites that had already been chosen, costs associated with previous elections in Morrisville, number of voters who have participated at each location. each location in Morrisville, and any potential for partnering with Cary on an early voting site. So at this point, I'm going to be able to share some of that information back to you. Again, I'm going to try to move through this pretty quickly. So exploration of sites in Morrisville for voting. Board of Election did share with us, we had posed a number of potential site locations to them for exploration, several of them being schools. So we asked about Parkside Elementary, Cedar Fork Elementary, Morrisville Elementary, Sterling Monastery, Paramount Monastery, and Goddard School. Essentially, what they've told us is schools are pretty much a no-go for them, for any number of reasons, really, if you refer to the criteria for voting sites, it's really hard for them to fit in those criteria. Feedback on the non-school locations that we submitted, Cedar Fork Community Center, the Baps Hindu Temple, and HSNC Temple, that information is still pending, so I do expect that they will be able to provide that back to us hopefully pretty soon. The back of the very front page of your packet, early voting sites for 2020 primary election, which is happening right now, were selected in October of last year. So that information had already been determined really prior to us kind of starting this conversation. What they did let me know is that early voting sites for the November 2020 general election will not begin until once this primary election is completed. So you've got probably another solid week, week and a half, two weeks before they really start to vet and look at those locations. So some previous early voting information, about middle of that second page, you see a little block and three years of voting data. So that middle column that says turnout, that is early voting turnout in Morrisville. The next column that says total EV turnout, that's total early voting turnout for Wake County. So that's just a comparison at a glance there. The potential for a split election cost would be pretty difficult. Morrisville and Cary have different types of elections. Morrisville holds a nonpartisan plurality election, we only vote in November. Cary holds a nonpartisan runoff election. So they vote in October, and if there is a need for runoff, they also vote in November. So based on conversations with Board of Election, they don't feel that to be a viable option. Some average election cost information is still pending, asked for that to be provided. I'm told they're working with finance staff to compile. I dare say they've got some higher priorities right now during early voting, so I don't have an estimate of when that might be available, but as soon as it's provided to staff, we'll certainly share that with council. So the, the second and third pages is really just that general information that you've already been provided, but just wanted you to have that for reference. I will do my best to answer questions.
I have a question. Why would the difference in the Morrisville and Cary municipal elections affect splitting the election costs for 2020?
Because we pay a different share of cost. Because if Cary has a runoff, they, they essentially pay different share of the election because they, they get billed double almost.
But they're not going to have a runoff in 2020. It's only an odd number of years. It would be 2009, I mean, like, this past year, 2019.
It'll, it'll affect 21.
Right.
That issue will affect 21, it will not affect 20. You're right.
Right.
Sure, sure. So I think we were just talking about municipal elections. I don't think we were talking general elections.
Oh, I thought we were.
I thought this is about the general.
Yeah, I think we wanted the early voting for, for the, the even number of years.
2020, yeah, for 2020, for sure.
Because you said they haven't started vetting early voting sites for 2020, November 2020.
Correct. I'll, I'll go back and clarify. I'll go back and clarify.
Yeah, if we're looking to have one in Morrisville, I don't think it'd be a split. Cary wouldn't pay for a Morrisville site in any case, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, that would be irrelevant for 2020.
I might have asked for it then. I might have misunderstood what I was asking for. So that was me. Okay. Any questions? So it sounds like the idea was to give Board of Elections some options, and then it's up to them. So I think we've done what we can to promote early voting for November 2020.
Yes.
Do you say that's accurate?
Yes, they, they did say that they are open to recommendations from, from municipalities, which we provided a number of. They told us right off the bat what, what would work and what wouldn't, or what wouldn't work, and they will vet the other options once the, the primary is over.
Okay, so that means they're vetting these three that you have down here.
The, yes, they, they have not started really vetting locations for the general election.
The only other site that was in, it's a site that wasn't mentioned, and I've just thought about it, but it's probably too late, is Wake Tech. Wake Tech would be a good early voting site.
So that may fall under their kind of school umbrella. I'm speaking off the, off the cuff, so I can't speak for them, but just based on that number of criteria for, for early voting sites, I mean, the, the site has to be available for up to 17 days, they have to be able to change locks, and just a whole litany of things.
Yeah, it might be hard for students.
Baps, I just didn't see it all, gave it. Either way. Would, would this council like to direct staff to, whatever avenue you use to present those other options, just throw Wake Tech at them as well? Just to make sure that we've done our due diligence. Couldn't hurt.
I'm happy to follow back up and ask that.
Yeah, if you could just throw it over the fence to them, so that's one of the options. Thank you.
Is First Baptist Church totally not an option? Why didn't?
They didn't want it.
I, I don't know about that one, but I can ask.
Because I know, I mean, so it's the most recent one we have, an early, as an early voting site, 2016.
Yeah, that was, I like it.
Yeah, you could throw that one back over. I think Meyer and Yenval has indicated that that one, they've changed the form, the design of their church area. So it's probably not an option from their side, but it's good to have BOE ask, just in case. So we had a lot of residents asking about an early voting site, so that, we were doing our due diligence to try to make sure that BOE was aware. We've done all that we can on that one as a council, so great job on that. Thank you, Erin, for all your help, Ms. Hudson. And I thought we were going to talk about citizen committee balloting. Is that a different thing?
That's Satish's, isn't it? I'll, I'll defer to Eric.
The proclamation or the balloting? Information regarding the balloting is going to take place on the March 23rd roundtable discussion.
Okay. I apologize, I was, missed, got the wrong stuff here. So now we're to the point where there was a couple of items that we were expecting to talk about, one of which is the citizen recognitions and proclamations. So open that up for discussion.
That's tomorrow night.
That's, the details are tomorrow night, but we can touch on it tonight. If it gives some direction, they'll be able to update it in preparation for voting tomorrow night.
That's okay, you can keep the whole time.
Proclamation resolution, we talked about earlier today, the individuals that have a turnout.
Okay, I will do a really quick brief here and then turn it over to you all for At your February 11th meeting, we discussed and proposed amendments to the town council policies and rules of procedure. This also stemmed from discussion at your January 2020 town council retreat. Additional consideration and discussion was given to the proposed citizen recognition policy, particularly Rule 25, which is your ceremonial documents rule, including proclamations, resolutions of recognition, and that new proposed citizen recognition policy. At that time, council really seemed to be more interested in ways to ensure consistency in review and authorization and distribution of those recognition documents, as well as methods of tracking and notification to the full council. At that time, you agreed to discuss Rule 25 in its entirety, so before you, you have the full Rule 25, roughly three pages or so. Asked that we share that with you tonight, and also maintain it on your February 25th agenda, should you have any additional discussion, and delay your vote until the March 10 meeting. So you have time to discuss this evening, you have time to discuss tomorrow, you additionally would have time to discuss March 10. So this is really your turn to let us as staff know how you foresee this rule serving you best.
Satish, why don't you go first?
Like, I think the whole idea, when I asked for this request of the citizen recognition award is to, heart and soul is for the citizens to be awarded. That's the whole thing. And I don't see anything that we do as really awarding any citizens. We do proclamations, but I've always seen it has, like, it's to the organizations that you're doing, but not really giving to the citizens. Yes, we do proclamations to people or elected officials who walk away, like, they're done with their tenure, or, you know, in some cases, you know, people in the committees who have served. But I don't really see a person from citizenry getting awarded. And that was the whole thing, was how can we do that? And it's, it's important to recognize, it could come in any form or shape. The kind of recognition could be a kid who has saved, or a person who has saved someone's life, that is, like, common, and, or could be achieved the highest honors that we didn't even expect, that's, that brings joy to the town. So several factors that goes into it, it's not, and obviously, it's incumbent upon us because we have to, and how we give and reflect to anyone would say, like, is it political or is it not? People watch. And for that, I want the transparency in a way where, like, there's a form that will be there, you fill those forms, and they, I like what we have in the strategy committees, like, you know, those checkboxes, does he, you know, perform this activity, does he perform that thing, and which one, and gave a statement of purpose of why you want to give it. And once we give that to the clerk, the clerk will basically pass it on to the rest of the council that this request has come in, and how you, you know, and if anyone has any questions can certainly ask about it. But it is important that everyone sees people in a different lens, and so it's important that all of us have equal kind of opportunities, that we could see different people in our, it's, our town is 28,000 and it's growing. So how many times have we really done? I've been here almost like 20 years, I don't see any that I can even count on. So that was the whole reason of bringing this to the roundtable.
Any other thoughts?
I support this. I think it's a great idea to acknowledge citizens. I think that every member on the council would have discretion submitting what they think is the right place, and it doesn't have to be done in the town hall, it can be done at an event, right? Maybe just somewhere else.
And, and that's, that's one point I was trying, I thought Vicki had, you know, she wanted be presented here, and I said, that is easy, if you, we all get council comments, you know? Then if you have, this is like only when a person has, then we can move that council meeting, council comments, little up, you know, and agenda of how you can place it, that can be awarded. It's not, it doesn't need an agenda, it doesn't need, like, kind of a thing, because people are getting informed, our council is getting informed, the whole idea of this and the proclamations are, how do we know? Because personally, when I look at the proclamation, I see, okay, this person, where did they come from? Because I'm not aware that this particular proclamation has had this process, pipeline process that we are exposed to. So like, the same way for me, I thought like, you know, and what Ann said, transparency is important, so if anyone is putting, the town clerk will send it to the entire council for review.
So is it possible to just incorporate this into our current system? Because we have the proclamation request set up already, so if someone wants to do a proclamation request recognizing a citizen, it can go through the system, and instead of Eric sending it to me for approval, it can go to the whole council for review, so we don't change the process very much.
The, the question, though, is who's doing the nominating, right? So I think what I heard Councilmember Garamella say is that a council member is going to nominate someone on a form that looks like our briefing form with whatever we decide the criteria, hash marks and explanation, and then it'll be circulated to the council. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I think.
So how do we get there? Because I thought, I, we don't even do that with proclamations. Why do we have to, I don't, why do that with this?
No, just, just to keep the transparency and a piece of copy to the town clerk that, you know, I didn't just give it to Joe Blow, I gave it to Joe Blow because of these criterias that he did.
He's justifying it.
Oh, no, it, there should be a copy. I agree with that. No, 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 I agree with that.
So that, that is the whole reason of telling them, and the council, that, hey, this has been, you know, triggered.
I totally agree with that. Well, then we need to do that with all of this. We're not even doing that.
I would like that with the proclamations.
Not doing that with proclamations either.
Yeah.
Yeah, why can't we do what you're wanting to do with the proclamations that we already have?
Because I'm not aware of them.
Because we have, I've not seen anything that citizen recognition is part of proclamation.
Proclamations aren't at the mayor's discretion anyway.
No, not, they're not.
If you look back at that spreadsheet that Eric sent out, if you go back a couple of years, there are more cases of where proclamation has been given out to an Eagle Scout, and to individuals, and not just the ones that occur at the end of the election year when the, their term has ended. In the past, it did seem like the proclamations were used to, to recognize individuals. We could go back to that.
Yeah, I just don't.
Just incorporate it the way it is.
I, I don't like the fact that it's only the mayor that has the discretion of the proclamation then.
Yeah, can we just change that part? I mean, because when, when we looked at that spreadsheet, it had, like, the count, it designated whether the council did it or the mayor.
So let's talk about what that column means. It just means the way it's worded at the bottom. It doesn't mean that the council had any say in it at all. It just refers to the wording on the actual proclamation. Some proclamations did not include the council.
Okay. Can we change that? Can we change that part?
We can change the language of Rule 25 wherever we see fit, you know?
Oh, yeah, I guess it does say at the discretion of the mayor.
That's generally one of the ceremonial duties. So if there's something broken, let's just let us, let me know what's broken and how can we adjust it.
There's no transparency with the proclamations. I don't know what they are until the meeting agenda is published.
Okay, that's easily fixed, and when Eric sends me the request, it can be seen by everybody.
I cannot issue or request a proclamation like they do in Cary, where council members can actually read the proclamations based on, you know, the organization or whatever they're fond of. I think we need to broaden that so other council members can read proclamations.
That's a request.
Yes, it is. Or we do the citizen thing. I, I like the idea about having a citizen award, because we don't have anything like that now. Proclamation is, is very blanket, overlay kind of, but to say, you inspire us, you've served our town, you've done some extraordinary achievement, and we want to recognize you.
Heroes. I think we're all in favor of that.
But not under the proclamation.
A proclamation, proclamation has a different, when you say you're recognizing proclamation, but I don't see really, like, that you can recognize a citizen under a proclamation. That's where I.
But you could, it's been done in the past. So have we done in the past? Where, what's the example?
I know, there was one that said it was an Eagle Scout.
So that was like.
That's essentially what we're doing for the sports teams, and we've moved that to before meetings, because these things take time.
But again, like, we don't know about it, like.
Not individuals.
So if you don't know about it, that's such an easy fix. I mean, Eric sends me draft proclamation, sometimes I just see it on the agenda, because these are things.
But I don't even have the option to say, I don't think that's appropriate or not, or, you know, it's too broad or it's too narrow. We don't have any input.
Have there been proclamations that you thought were inappropriate?
Sometimes I thought you missed some, and I didn't know that you missed it until the meeting. There's, 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 sometimes we recognize certain months of awareness for health and well-being and different kinds of things, and one year you do it, and the next year you don't. And I don't understand why we don't have things on a rolling calendar. And I don't understand why we don't have things on a rolling calendar. So, I mean, the proclamation process, in my opinion, is not transparent, it's not endorsed by council, we, we don't really have equal say, and we need more say.
Any resident, including me before I was on the council, were requesting proclamations. So any proclamation you want, just ask.
But you're not communicating what's going in the hopper.
I just said that that's easy to fix, and we have the list of all the past ones. If there's something that we're missing, let's make sure we don't miss it this year.
So you're also missing that council feels like they're not a part of the proclamation process, and they want to be a bigger part of the process of recognizing. That's what the request is for. And we do not feel like we're part of the proclamation, and we've had this discussion. You're the only one that reads the proclamations, that's not how it is in other towns. That's how it's been in this town probably almost forever. They, some mayors did, some mayors allowed other council members to read the proclamations. It was kind of up to each mayor. So there was one mayor that was fabulous about doing that. I think that's what you're hearing, is that people want to be a part of this process, that this matters to them, that they want to help recognize people. So we're trying to figure out a way to acknowledge that in our procedure. And I think, and I think this could be, if you look at the town of Apex, they do proclamations and they also do what they call a, a, a letter of honor. And that, that is where, in this letter of honor is where they actually recognize individuals. We're asking for the, the, the ability to recognize individuals in some manner, and that we all be a part of that process, because it matters to some of us.
So those letters of honor, are they agreed, voted on by the whole town council? Like, did a majority vote?
That I can't tell. I, actually, I'm not sure about that. I can't, I can't tell from.
If we're having issues about whether or not we reappoint someone after a couple of missed meetings, how willing are we going to be to discuss this kind of stuff about who's the best citizen in town?
That, that was not what the original request was. The original request was that each one of us be allowed to choose our own, and Satish had asked for four. Now we're down to two. That's up to each one of us.
It sounds like it's coming back into meetings rather than outside of meetings.
And does it have to?
I'm unclear about where you're getting the meetings or not. This is just about this option.
The way this is written is it will not be distributed during town council meetings.
Okay, well, I heard Councilmember Garamella talking about doing it during council, so that's why I was wondering.
You can amend it. It's not, what I mean to say is like, it's not like, has to be like a proclamation agenda on the, that's, if, if some people are passionate, they have their council time, they can take 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, no one stops them, they want to talk. So during that time, they are doing whatever they're allocated. I'm going to say if that's not the will of the council, they don't want to do it, fine, I'm fine, but at least you have the opportunity to do it.
Are you talking about proclamations?
No, 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 giving the citizen awards.
Okay, well, now, now you're saying you want that at a council meeting.
If, if, if someone wants it, if I, I would go to that particular event or give it out of the council meeting. If, if Vicky feels like, you know, she wants to do it, you have the option of council comments time.
You can do a proclamation at a meeting or outside of a meeting. Satish was saying the majority should be outside, but there would always be an option as a council comment, you know, to do something, because that's council member's time.
Oh, got it. During your, your council, yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Got it, got it, got it, I missed that part. So, yeah, during your time at council comments, you can say, I gave a certificate of honor to Mary Smith the other day, and, sure you can, that's your time to talk.
Yeah, that's my time, that's what I'm saying.
So can we do what Satish is wanting to do and just have it voted on by the majority of the town council members? Is that, I mean, would that be all right with you, Satish?
It, it's not about me, you know, like, I brought this proposal, and we want to build a transparency around it. And if you want to award it, then I would say then Rule 25 has to be awarded too, because the proclamation.
The proclamations need to be voted as well.
So, so is, so do we go through the whole process like that? Or just, you know, if the proclamations is running fine, and just the matter of status quo, that it has to be informed to the council, and the same go to the citizen, okay, you can give it, you have the discretion to give it, but follow the process and everyone is informed. So we, we do either one way, this way, or both ways, you know? So that's, that's the whole thing.
So if the mayor doesn't need the permission of council, then a responsible council member can recognize somebody without having the council vote, but a council awareness is obviously.
Yeah, council awareness is, is critical.
Okay, I'm hearing two different things here. Donna wants to vote on.
It sounds like a false equivalency to me. Proclamations are ceremonial nature, generally at the discretion of the mayor.
Right.
They're requested in, and everyone wants, wants to vote on them.
We want to have a council mechanism.
You have one. Anyone can ask for a proclamation.
We don't have, we don't, it's not equal.
It's not equal. The mayor is the ceremonial body.
So either we vote on the proclamations and the citizen awards, or the council wants an option to have the same privilege to award a citizen award. It's fair.
Okay, if you don't think that can be done in the proclamation process?
I don't.
Thoughts from this end of the table?
I mean, couldn't we just, at the discretion of the council member, what place for the nomination, and basically just, rather than having a formal vote, you wouldn't want to have a formal vote in an open session, we could always go into a closed session under the Rule 2.
You can't do that in closed session.
What, you're discussing.
That's not okay.
It's not a personal matter.
Really? Because you don't want to discuss an open candidate in public, right? Well, I mean.
It, it will look pretty bad if I wanted to give and then Ann said no, and someone said yes, so it looks like, oh, okay, it, it looks nasty.
Yeah, how would we vote on proclamations?
We don't vote on the proclamation, they just submitted like.
I mean, if we did that, that would, yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, the proclamations are generally not.
You don't vote on it.
Something that's going to be.
And these are, these are just. It's not, it's not like you're giving like a, you know, it's honorary, that award that you're giving. I like what was put in there, because same as proclamation, ceremonial in nature, same thing, citizen award is ceremonial in nature. That's pretty much it. It's like there's no legal binding to anything.
You can submit the name as a nomination, and then it would be written, sent in a note to us, and then if anybody had a real problem with it, they could just say no, and then that's, it's, you know.
But he could still award it. You could say, these are my reservations.
Yeah. I would say that's the best way to do it then.
So.
How about, I have a question for you, sorry. You go ahead, please.
All right, so let me ask you this. If this citizen award thing, which I think is fine and a good idea, is the, is the only difference between the two things, that one is awarded to an individual and one is awarded to a group or in, in honor of a month or some other type of thing? Because I'm hearing two different things, one of which is that there are council members that want more input and transparency into the proclamation process, and also want to be able at their discretion or at the mayor's discretion or whatever, to award a proclamation about an issue or a month or a group that they feel strongly about. Second, also, not secondarily, but also, I'm hearing that we want a vehicle which is council-driven specifically to, including the mayor, to address the fact that we don't give individual awards. So I guess my question is, if we change the proclamation process so that anyone, I mean, anyone can drive it now, obviously, but if we change the proclamation process so that there's a little more flexibility in who awards the proclamation, because we can already give them to individuals, does that solve our problem? Or do we still need this other award, this individual citizen award? I think we still do. But I think there's two questions here, one of which is, do we want to make a change in the proclamation process? That's a separate question. Do we need this new process, which I believe, I think there's consensus that we do? So, and I'm, I don't have any problem with how it's worded here. Does anyone have a specific problem with how this discussion, this, these paragraphs about the citizen requirement, the citizen recognition award? Specifics problem with the wording of this citizen recognition award with these paragraphs? Not, not the proclamation process, because that's a separate issue, but does anyone have an issue with how this is laid out? Does anyone think we don't need it? Does anyone think we should fold it into the proclamation process? Or is everyone on board that we need a citizen recognition award and that these rules for it are fine?
No.
Okay, so you think that we should do it as part of the regular proclamation process?
I think it could be done as part of the regular proclamation process. I think when you look back at the, the past history, it's become more of awarding for the month or some, for whatever, all these random things. But in the past, it has been used for citizens.
Okay.
So we could go back to that, and how, but I think you have to change the proclamation process a little bit, where the council members have more input, and possibly like if there's a person that a town council member feels very strongly about, then the mayor should consider letting that town council member do the presenting.
Yeah, and I think that could happen for some of these other proclamations too, in the months, things like that.
So it needs to be hardcoded that way. It needs to be worded that way. I'm not to, you know, you're the mayor today. Who, who knows who the mayor's going to be five years from now, two years from now, 10 years from now? Think about this, it needs to be in here then that says, all council members can present a proclamation. I'm with you on that. I'm, I'm, you got me now.
Okay, so.
But not considered, that's too busy.
Well.
But I know, I.
I was using soft language for TJ.
Not at the mayor's discretion, it needs to be, council needs to participate.
Well, this, it seems like going a little overboard now that I know that it's such an issue. Why don't you let me consider it and see if, if it meets your guys' needs.
TJ, you've known it was an issue. You know it was an issue, so I'd rather see it than writing it.
I don't believe I knew it was an issue until the Citizen Recognition.
I'm going to say, my, my Citizen Recognition was purely recognizing the citizen, okay? But when, when the whole issue started, when we started digging into the proclamation issue, you know, so that, so those are two different things, but my pure and honest thinking was, we are not getting a chance to recognize the citizens. And that's, that's, that's where I was.
Right, and so my question is, if we all agree as council that a proclamation can be used to recognize a citizen, and we all commit to looking out for opportunities to do that with a proclamation, and we all commit to making TJ aware when we feel really strongly that we should, for whatever reason, be the person to award, to award or read the proclamation, does that fix everyone's problem?
Not unless there's language in the proclamation.
I think they want to edit out this discretion of the mayor.
What I'm saying is that this can, but we can go back to staff and we can say, please amend the proclamation process to reflect this discussion. Is that what we think we should do?
Satish.
It's Satish, it's your, it's your thing, I'm just trying to clarify the issues.
So, so then the question comes back is, how many proclamations can you do? Okay, because we are setting a very strict standard, which I like, is you cannot give anyone within a five-year period, the same person, you're setting very high, you know, here's not elected official.
We can include that, we can still include some wording.
But, well, so for a personal proclamation, for a proclamation to a person, there should be some kind of language like that. If it's to an individual, like to a group or for a month or whatever, I don't care, but a proclamation to a citizen, I think there should be some kind of language like that anyway.
So, does it say then, not at mayor's discretion, entire council's discretion?
Yeah, well, I think yes.
So that way, you know, then anyone can put in the form and get a, read out a proclamation.
So anyone can put in a form now, anyone can put in a form now. We're saying that council members twice a year could request a proclamation to an individual, and that we would, that they would let the mayor, they would make it apparent to the mayor, I mean, I think we could all settle for like a phone call or an email, I don't know if we need to codify that, but that we will make the mayor aware that this is a proclamation that for some personal reason, we're very interested in delivering ourselves. And I, I mean, I.
I would even be stronger, I would say that if I nominate some individual, then I would want to present it. I wouldn't say make the mayor aware that I would like to.
Okay.
I would say if I nominate an individual, that's my thing.
Yeah.
That's for, that, that could be for anything, you know, not just for individual that. You have, you want to go give something like a different organization, you can do that too, because it's wide open.
Also, I think that we should establish a rolling calendar for like Black History Month and, you know, I mean, that I think we should do just.
I was going to mention that. We didn't do it this time.
We missed some very significant ones.
Yeah.
We missed Black History Month.
So I have a question. So how did this, how did you guys, what was the mechanism for getting this resolution in, in formation? On March 8th, 2019, there was a resolution recognizing Harlene and Steve Otha for community service.
I requested a proclamation, but TJ wasn't there, and he did not authorize it. So staff helped me put together a resolution that was introduced during the meeting and supported by council and approved during that meeting, and then we presented that to the couple during the meeting.
They were advisory committee members.
Right. I would have preferred that it would have been a proclamation, but it was not, and that's.
But can we use that as somewhat of an example of how we would move forward with recognizing citizens?
It was messy.
Okay.
Yes, we need to make the process cleaner so that that can happen.
And if any one of us feels like you should not get it, then that, that word goes pretty bad to the community.
It could be messy.
But I guess the question is, can we make a direction to, can we ask the staff to put together some changes to the proclamation process that would fold in this discussion? And then we could take out the citizen award section, change the proclamation process in the ways that we all seem to want to change the proclamation process anyway, then are we good, I guess, is the question.
So you, you can word a proclamation saying, you know, if, say we called this other thing a citizen honorary award, you could word the proclamation to say, this proclamation is in recognition, is acknowledging the citizen honor.
Got the word, yeah, yeah.
You can word the proclamation similar to how you probably would have worded this, and you can, because you can do it anything you want at the top. Remember, the top of the proclamation is, it's like the overall description, you can put any word you want in there.
Well, how, can I say something? So in 2013, there was Spencer Lloyd Payne Eagle Scout proclamation. Is it, could we, you look at that proclamation and see what the wording is?
So that was not presented at a meeting?
I don't know.
That was presented probably at a private event, and then it's different.
Okay, but it was a proclamation.
Well, it wasn't made aware to me, I was not aware of that. So I was here during most of those meetings, it was done at a private event.
Can we use that as a sample?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Where is that? Why, why do I keep missing that? What date is it?
Yeah, bottom line, I think, we are, we are talking, I think I like what you're saying. Then a couple of things happened in terms, it's like at the council discretion.
Oh, I see it now.
Let's talk about sort of.
It was a private event. It was, it was, I, it was a pri, it was at his Eagle Scout Award dinner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So circling back, do staff have what they need?
If I can, so I've been jotting down notes and typing, if I can try and just.
What have you heard?
Recapture what I think I've heard, and tell me if I've misunderstood, please. Removing the citizen recognition portion, amending the proclamation section to include that all, all council members can request and present proclamations. Council members can request two personal proclamations. Council members can request two personal proclamations annually. If a council member nominates an individual, they will be presenting that proclamation. Establish some type of a rolling calendar to include recurring recognition proclamations, so significant holidays and events, things of that sort, and include maybe a reference to a citizen honors somewhere in this, so that we still kind of capture that individual recognition.
That last little bit, I think that you mentioned it, but the criteria is what you're trying to capture. The criteria for this citizen award needs to be pulled out of that section three and put into the proclamation.
Because I think we still like that, right? A lot.
We do like that criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's getting... I'm turning into... We have a meeting tomorrow, so we're going to spend more quality time together.
Okay, so we took care of the staff easy, quick ones.
We won't let you go first.
Have a chance to get to one roundtable item. Who would like to present?
Mayor, I need to leave.
Okay.
It's too late for me. I need to get rest. I wish to be excused.
So can we, before we do, can we... Because you're not the only one fading. Can we put this on agenda for tomorrow night, the roundtable, and we each get to present one?
Yeah, it's a good idea. I'm not looking at it.
Okay. I love that.
I have three, but I will...
You have a closed session, and you have a 90-minute budget discussion. If you want to insert this, it would make more sense to be before your closed session. Your closed session is heavy and meaty. The timestamp for the meeting tomorrow...
10:30.
Was already...
About 11:15.
Getting a little punchy, Steve.
Yeah, it's late.
Would that schedule 9:30?
Yeah, so it's 10, 11 o'clock.
That's optimistic.
Yeah.
9:30.
Yeah, there's literally virtually no business except for an update on this item.
Yeah.
You've got the MAFC Capital Project Admin Report that we wouldn't present. Questions, I've already shared. Your big discussion about MAFC comes next month when we talk about the reopening of the facility, candidly. So it's the work session and the closed session are most of your meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
All this other stuff goes...
Better shot tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll be more alert.
Yeah, I think we have better shot tomorrow. And when's the next roundtable scheduled?
March 23rd.
Oh, okay.
I'll just hold off on mine till then in that whole same time.
So can we do the, what you're suggesting, Liz? Do we want to do that after the budget and before the closed session?
Yeah.
Before the budget.
I'll also hold off until the 23rd of March. I don't have anything I have to present tomorrow.
I have one that's time sensitive, so that's fine.
I have one that's time sensitive.